Thank you. Welcome one, welcome all. We're going to start our informal, our workshop session, but we're going to have an add-on first. City Manager DeHaney and Chief Nutigate have received inquiries from individual council members and others about various aspects of the investigations into the tragic events that occurred on the night of March 26, 2021. DeShaila Harris and Donovan Lynch were killed and others were injured in three separate incidents that happened all within minutes. Understandably, people have questions. While investig- with investigations ongoing, Commonwealth Attorney Colin Stolli reminded us in a letter he sent to us earlier today of our collective responsibilities to make sure nothing jeopardizes the investigatory processes. This applies both to the investigation the Virginia Beach Police are doing into the shooting death of DeShaila Harris and the investigation the Virginia State Police is conducting at the request of Chief Nutigate into the officer-involved shooting that resulted in the death of Donovan Lynch. However, when we do have updates, we want to make sure the information is shared with the entire body as well as the public. I'm going to turn this over to City Manager Patrick DeHaney, who will provide a briefing on the status of potential funding items and action steps being considered in addressing broader public safety concerns. Mr. DeHaney.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you and speak to you on three specific topic areas briefly that we're going to talk about, to talk to you briefly this afternoon. Chief Nutigate is also here to field any questions that you may have after I have a brief discussion with council. The first item is to review an ordinance we drafted at the request of the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Henley, which is to bring forward items that be considered immediate, that can be considered immediately rather than waiting for the new fiscal year as part of the regular budget process. The second is to provide you with an overview of some steps Chief Nutigate and I will be taking to augment the city's public safety approach. And the third item highlights some initiatives we believe are necessary for reimagining public safety and creating community-based coalitions for solving the problems addressing a broad range of concerns that not only our cities face, but also the entire country as well. The first item, the draft ordinance that's placed before you. We appreciate council's consideration of accelerating the purchase and implementation of several technological and organizational solutions that will augment our current efforts. While some of the items are unique to the oceanfront, others have citywide benefits. The ordinance before you, the draft ordinance that we hope that council will consider before you will accelerate the following items. A gunshot detection system that will triangulate and locate the source of gunshots within a three mile, within a three-square-mile area. We currently envision piloting this in the oceanfront area, but we're looking right now to identify other places in the community that we can place this system and technology as well. We also are asking to accelerate the purchase of brass tracks. As the chief mentioned previously, brass tracks would allow the police department to get quicker access to national ballistic information to help, to help us better solve gun-related crimes. Also, we all know that we've talked about the ocean camera, the oceanfront camera expansion. This will allow us to proactively and accelerate the purchase of an additional 42 cameras in the oceanfront. We're also looking to possibly, if council approves it, to accelerate 13 mobile and temporary lighting units. And we say temporary right now is that we do plan to do a SEP-TED analysis to identify other areas that we can make more permanent improvements, but these 13 lighting, 13 mobile units will allow us to get lighting more quickly into some of the areas that we identify as problems already. The second item of concern, the second item concerns some of the items that the chief and I will undertake to enhance the public safety response. The first one is we're going to work on a staffing and operational efficiency assessment with an outside consultant to provide a professional assessment of the Virginia Beach Police Department in terms of staffing and review areas for operational efficiency. We're working also on a SEP-TED, and that's Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, specifically for the oceanfront to identify problems with the built environment that we can change to increase safety and security. As you know, we have yet to achieve full deployment of the body-worn camera program, and we initially thought that we had a workable solution with the signal sidearm functionality. Our early tests with the new mounting hardware that we received from the manufacturer has been disappointing. The chief is available to answer any additional questions as it relates to that, but we did get additional mounting hardware for the holsters, and our initial tests so far has shown that it's not necessarily working in terms of connectivity. So the chief can provide more answers as it relates to that, but we're disappointed to find that the solution that the manufacturers provided us is not working at the current moment. The third item that I wanted to discuss with council recognizes that the issues of crime prevention and perceptions of safety are not just in the purview of local government and police alone. It acknowledges that we have a lot of work to do, not just as a city, but as a nation, dealing with issues of racism, equity, social justice, and violence. I am credibly proud of the men and women in our Virginia Beach Police Department. They are dedicated to serving our community during probably some of the hardest times in that the country has faced in its history. For us to make meaningful progress, members of our community must play key roles, and we must come together to explore what we can do collectively to make our city safe, but also to bridge all the divides. The police department has taken a number of steps to build relationships with the residents of our community. A few examples are that the department routinely conducts surveys in the neighborhoods, going door-to-door to solicit input and hear concerns. The department is also decentralizing, as the chief mentioned, our community engagement unit to create the capacity in each district and also establishing an oceanfront community liaison team. We can build on this kind of work to further develop our working relationships with the community. Chief Nutigate is also working to establish a chief's advisory group that will bring community stakeholders together to work with the chief to address, to identify policies and procedures and how we can improve, how we deliver our policing response to our citizens. We agree with others who have called for a community dialogue because the issues we face are more than just what the city organization can handle by itself. This is in part why the mayor is working with the region of mayors on advocating a more regional approach to dealing with a lot of the issues that are plaguing on the oceanfront at this time. None of the issues that we're talking about here, except for the technology and some of the operational stuff, are quick fixes. We know city government is not the only player in the equation. We are committed to improving safety, trust, and confidence, and look forward to engaging with members of our community to help achieve those ends. I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have about the ordinance or anything else that council may have about the investigation at this time.
Mr. Wood.
Anybody else? Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two questions. Two questions going forward. Thank you, City Manager. My first question is, this initiative, this ordinance, I guess it's a statement first. I think it's a good start. I think coming from discussions where we talked about going forward and making sure that our oceanfront city is a lot safer, so these are some good, good steps, immediate steps we can take. My other question would be, where can we get more initiative and intention on creating a fully funded citizen review panel that also has funding in it so we can make sure we have a community, as you stated, that we can work together and best serve our community, make us more safe?
Mr. Rouse, I think the question is about where we can get more information about what it would take to fund a citizen review panel. Definitely, if that's something that is of interest to council, we can provide that information for you. You know, at this time, I think probably what I would do is go back after this meeting and have the team put together what it would look like for a budget that we can respond to you in a Friday package to give you that information, sir.
Sure. I think I'll be drafting, getting with the Attorney's Office draft ordinance to fully fund the citizen review panel with full investigative and subpoena powers as well. I think what you stated as far as the progress that our citizens play in the key roles to make our citizens, our city more safe, is something that we can't overlook in order to, to build more trust in our community. So that's, that's my, my other question. My other question is, I guess, I don't know how the best, who could, who could answer this? And it deals with the investigation of the officer-involved shooting, understanding that we don't know exactly what happened. There's an independent investigation that the chief has called for by the Virginia State Police. So if, if there's all this uncertainty and all these questions surrounding the shooting, my, my question is what, who made the decision to, to put the term "brandishing," Mr. Donovan Lynch, term "brandishing" the firearm out there, being that we don't know what transpired or how the interaction happened?
Good afternoon to council. Mr. Rouse, that decision was made at the police department after, I believe if we clearly look at the press release, what came out is that was the information that was obtained from the interviews with the two officers. So that was not the position of the police department, that was not the position of the city, that was merely a factual statement from the information that was gleaned from the interviews of the two officers.
I understand that. I think, you know, again, it, it goes into a narrative that somehow Mr. Lynch, who grew up in the city, had three businesses here, who's an upstanding citizen, and goes into this narrative that somehow he was kind of, you know, villainized and that he was responsible for his own shooting or his own death when we don't understand and know anything when it comes to the officer-involved shooting. So my question would be, then what ways, because it comes off as a statement from our city and it comes from our police department as well, in what ways can we change that narrative and basically say, listen, we don't know, that's why we ask for independent investigation?
I think at the point that we're at now, council member, is if Virginia State Police's investigation, if witnesses come forward that shed additional light or they refute what was asserted by the officers, we would definitely change that narrative. But at this point in time, that is the sole information that we obtained during that initial investigation. Any further ability to follow up or clarify? Lost this police department, lost this city when we turned it over to the Virginia State Police.
So there's, there's no other remedies to clarify that? And I asked this question because there's a lot of concerns from the community as well, as well as the family of Mr. Lynch, who, who raised that and thinks that somehow, you know, the city has taken, our officers, our, our police department has taken this position that Mr. Lynch was somehow, you know, caused this, his own, his own death and with the circumstances of, and the unknown circumstances of not having a body-worn camera on, unknown officers are, we don't know what officers are involved, but yet the only piece of evidence or statement that's there is that Donovan Lynch was brandishing the weapon. And, and that, you know, caused a lot of concern, a lot of trust issues as well, being that there's just so much unknown here. And so if, if you're telling me that there's no way to remedy that, then I'll just have to accept that.
At this point in time, I think what we were trying to do was put out information to the community. We were not trying to inflame the community. That was based on the information that we had at that time. If that information changes, I would be more than happy to issue a retraction. At this point in time, we have no additional information. Let me rephrase that. There may be additional information. I'm not privy to it. As, as we mentioned, when we turned this investigation over, I have no additional information of anything that is occurring. So unfortunately, I cannot stand in front of the body and provide any updates.
All right. Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Ms. Henley.
I'll have other suggestions and comments later on when we do the council discussion, but in light of what Mr. DeHaney and, and the chief have suggested as a part of study, how did you put it? The improvements to the police department's organizational structure and the best use of the law enforcement personnel and some of Mr. Rouse's comments, I would like to just ask something else. I've been reviewing over the past week the final report of the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing, which was done by a task force, a national task force in 2015. And I believe a couple of years ago, then-Chief Severa gave us a report on how the city of Virginia Beach is addressing these issues and, and so forth. Could you update that for us, please? Because I think these issues, this is, you know, we don't really have to reinvent the wheel. This was a pretty extensive task force. They've made a lot of recommendations, a lot of actions. It's an extremely thorough report, and I recommend it to everyone because I think it gives us a very broad perspective. And so if you could update that for us, I think it would give us a comparison of what the President's Task Force suggested. There are a lot of action items, a lot of recommendations in that report, and I think it's a good, good place for us to begin that measurement, if you would.
Absolutely. Councilmember Henley, I actually just read that the other day. I believe it's like a 48-page document, and I think what that spelled out at the time that that was completed, which I believe was a year or two ago that they issued that document, is that we either agreed with or were in compliance with the vast majority of those recommendations that came out of the 21st Century Policing Report. So we can absolutely update that and see where we are in regards to compliance with all those objectives.
And with all of the issues that we're facing today, perhaps it gives us some perspective for how we need to go forward with some of these as well. And so I didn't know if maybe our, our opinion might have changed and whatnot. So if you could do that, I think it would be very helpful for us.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wood.
I want to also echo my colleague, Councilmember Rouse's concern and call for a budget for the citizens' review panel. Certainly have been on record for asking for this many times, and so the, the interest is, is there. I certainly would like to see information referencing a budget for citizens' review panel because I think in line with providing something like this, which is great, that is taking the initiative to address the concerns that happened from the incidences that occurred in March, I would think right up there in the priority level is a citizens' review panel because a lot of the questions that I continue to get, a lot of the misconceptions, conspiracy theories, and the like that I continue to hear about the death of Mr. Lynch and Ms. Harris, all those things can certainly be looked at through a effective citizens' review panel. And I, I hope that with a budget, we can move forward to an ordinance that defines what a real citizens' review panel is as well. My other thought or question centers around the families. I know there was some information mentioned by the mayor about Mr. Stolli, and I get that, but it doesn't mean that the questions from the families are going to stop. It doesn't mean that there's, they won't still have concerns, and they want to know where to go. And if they know where to go, if there is some indication that there's a way for them to get what they need in their time of need and hurting and pain from the loss of their loved ones, I think it would better serve leadership that there's some way that they can, at least if you can't give them the information, at least reach out on a, on a regular basis, at least let them know in the, the most general way possible, we're actively trying to make sure you have your needs concerned. So the questions are not going to stop. The concerns are not going to stop for the families until they get justice. And so for me, when I'm asking a question, if you don't have it, if you don't know, it, at least, you know, provide a direction for me to give families. Mr. Lynch's family, Ms. Harris's family. So is there a way, will there be some type of regular contact or update, or who takes the lead on that?
Chief, I'll start. Ms. Wood, obviously, I think we all, as a council, as a city, express our deep and profound condolences to the family of Ms. Harris and Mr. Lynch for the loss of their loved one. But I think as the chief mentioned before, with the city being taken out of the process in terms of investigation and not playing a role and not being able to provide information as it may possibly, as according to the Commonwealth Attorney appears if we're impairing the investigation, we can't be that source, we can't dialogue with the, the family. So the recommendation that we would have for the family is for them to reach out to the Commonwealth Attorney or the Virginia State Police if they have any information, if they have any information or have any questions regarding the investigation.
And so is, is there, does the Commonwealth Attorney, are they prepared to operate in that, in that area for the family? Not just simply saying, call a phone number if you have any tips? That's not what they're looking for. They're looking for some comfort and concern about the loss of their loved one. They're not looking for a phone number, not looking for an address, not looking for a prepared text message. It's not what they're looking for. So if that you say that's where they need to go, that's fine, but are they prepared to address the concerns of the family in a sensitive manner in the loss of their loved ones? And I just want to say this as well, because I have heard it through reports in the media. I do want to make sure Mrs. Shaila Harris's family knows we are just as much as concerned about the loss of their loved one, just as much as Mr. Lynch and their family, just as much as those who were harmed, who were not fatally wounded, but they were still harmed. We're, we're just as much as concerned about everyone, even the officer who was hit by the car. We're concerned about everyone involved, and I want to make sure the public knows we're not taking sides, we're not looking more into one person's case than the other one because of a certain person who might be associated with a family. That's not what the city of Virginia Beach leadership is about. When we say that we are concerned, we're concerned for everyone involved, every family. So I want to make sure that that is appropriately and significantly stated so the public knows that.
Councilmember, I think what I can offer on that one is due to the fact that we have turned over the incident involving Mr. Lynch to the Virginia State Police, and we are no longer investigating that, being kept abreast in any manner, we can now take those resources and devote them to Ms. Harris's case. So that remains a top priority for this police department and this community.
And so are you saying that in terms of updates for Ms. Harris, they can be directed to your department?
Yeah, we can also, yes. We have the lead on Ms. Harris's investigation. That was not turned over to the Virginia State Police. And I know just from corresponding with the homicide detectives today, they had contact with Ms. Harris's family just yesterday.
That's good to know because oftentimes we're not made aware of how many times they've been contacted, and when we get the information, it's as if there was no contact made. And I do hear the questions that come. As it relates to Mr. Stolli, though, is he prepared to provide what I just stated before to the family of Mr. Lynch? When they call, when they reach out, is, is he prepared for that?
What I can offer is I will confer with Mr. Stolli and see what we can do as a police department to accommodate some of those emotional endeavors that we need to. And I think that's probably a good opportunity for us to look holistically at where we are. One of the things if we don't already have embedded, we should probably look at some type of victim liaison that comes from the social work side of the house to really address those type of issues because the officers are focused on investigation, as they rightfully should. I definitely think there's an opportunity for us to, to address both sides of that, and that's something that I'll look at, and I'll have a conversation with the manager as we move forward.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Tower, then Mr. Bellucci.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is sort of a follow-up to Councilwoman Wood's questions. We have two investigations going of the, on of the same incident, that is, the officer-involved shooting, one by the Commonwealth Attorney and one by the Virginia State Police. Is that correct?
I would say that's a fair statement, yes.
Yeah. So how, how are, how are they coordinating? Are we, do we know that? Are we able to say anything about how they are coordinating their efforts?
No, sir.
They're certainly aware of each other's efforts, I take it.
And that's why I wanted to make it very clear when I appeared in front of this body and we listened to the calls for an outside, objective, independent investigation, that once we took that route, that we, we abdicated our ability to weigh in, to be privy to anything concerning this investigation.
So responding, going back to Ms. Wood's questions, the answer is we don't know either from the state police or the Commonwealth Attorney how prepared they are to deal with some of the victim attention that we are. I mean, that's, that's a matter of their practice and procedures, and we, at this point, we can't tell the families or the public exactly, one, how those two investigations of the same incident will be coordinated or not, and two, how they might interact with, with members of the family in terms of giving updates and the like.
Absolutely correct, sir.
And I was just trying to think, is there a way that, that without interfering in any way with those investigations, we can at least offer assistance, again, not necessarily through your department, maybe, maybe in some other way? I think it's difficult when you got two investigations. We also got calls for a third type of investigation, a federal investigation. I'm not sure how, how that would work, if, if it, if it would at all, but I can see, I mean, I, I understand the need that these investigations take time and that they don't lend themselves to giving daily, much less hourly, reports, particularly at this stage of an investigation. And I'm, it's just unfortunate, and as much as people may want to have those investigations done and the answers given, they're going to take some time. I understand that. I think most people, most members of the public understand that. But I do think it might be helpful if there's any way, because of the multiple agencies involved, if there's any way we can, can help with that, just in terms of keeping the public and the families up to date when we can. So there's, not that, I don't, I, I have no idea whether the Commonwealth Attorney or the Virginia State Police are equipped to do that. I don't think we can say what they're equipped to do.
Mr. Tower, I'll follow up. I mean, we, we both know that they're, they're very competent, professional organizations. They've investigated other shootings. I'm sure they've thought about these. I just can't tell you for sure, but I will have some follow-up.
Right. And I, I don't think anybody's talking about the quality of the investigation per se. I think it's more, more interacting with the public and the people, the victims of the incident. Thanks for, if you kind of let us know what you find out about that, I think it'd be helpful.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Yeah, Mr. Bellucci.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of course, I was expecting to be spending this time talking about Virginia Moca, but I'm, and I'm, see, there's a really nice contingent of folks from, from Moca who are here who are anxious to speak with us, but this is a very important topic, no question about it. And I certainly, based on the conversations we had in the beginning, in the beginning of this presentation, was expecting to talk about the, the important issues of, of public safety that we're facing, particularly at the oceanfront, but really throughout the city. And then the conversation turned to the discussions about the civilian review board, which is an important discussion that we're having in our community. But I feel an obligation, really more than an obligation, a responsibility to point out that in all of the discussions that I'm aware of, that we've had within this city and this council related to the civilian review board, there's been an omission of critical and key stakeholders in that conversation who this discussion impacts greatly, and that's the men and women. And that's the men and women who serve our police department every day as police officers. The Police Benevolent Association that represents over 500 officers has not been engaged in a formal way, certainly, in these discussions. The Police Supervisors Association has also not been included in these discussions. And when I became a candidate for council and joined this council, you know, we often talk about collaboration and creating good public policy. And good public policy isn't policy that's rammed through, it's not policy that's, that's formulated so quickly that it omits key stakeholders, such as the officers, the men and women who it impacts directly. But it doesn't just impact the police officers, the men and women who, who would be directly impacted by the civilian review board, and what the implementation means and what the strategy looks like. It would also impact Virginia Beach citizens because of the impacts that, that quickly implementing a system that doesn't include the input from those key stakeholders could have on the public safety landscape throughout our city. So I just think it's really important, and, you know, I'm, I'm very interested in this discussion. It's very important to me that all members of our community are equally represented, are treated fairly in every aspect of life in our city, and that we have a public safety infrastructure that the public trusts. But in order to have that public trust, all parties must be at the table. And all parties have not been at the table in these discussions. And it's an omission, either by design or by accident, that is glaring. And the impact of drafting a resolution and bringing it to this body without that level of consideration could be detrimental, not only to our police department and to our public safety infrastructure, but to our entire community. So I say that more, Chief, and to Mr. Duhany, as a statement, and it's really a statement to this body more than it is to you. But I do have, but I think it's important, I think it's critical, that citizens of Virginia Beach understand that, that they understand that the discussions which are valid, and they're critical, and they're so important, have not been complete. And it's my interest that we do have those more complete conversations, to include all people at the table who are, who will be affected by this. But, but, Chief, if I could just ask you one question.
Sure.
If we did have a civilian review board under the most permissive standards that you're aware of, how would that have impacted? How would that, how would this discussions about the, about the shooting at the Virginia Beach oceanfront that happened on, I believe, March 26th? If we had one, a civilian review board with the most permissive standards, what would, what would that process look like? In other words, would there be another independent investigation that would be running concurrently?
Not at this time. The, the review board would only kick in because it's only centered around administrative investigations. It has no authority to monitor or weigh in with a criminal investigation. So once Mr. Staley's office, the Virginia State Police, finished their investigation, they render a criminal finding. At that point, the internal investigation from the VBPD would kick in, as well as the administrative parallel, but independent from the review board. So that could be three months from now, it could be six months from now, it could be nine months from now. And unfortunately, what a review board would not give us right now is the ability to answer the questions that we all have. I just want to make clear, because I do hear that in the community, I think there is a misconception that a review board would answer these questions that we have right now, and that is not factual.
I appreciate that, and I wanted to make that clear as well. And I also want to make clear that my comments are not meant to diminish in any way the importance of the calls for transparency and for, and for justice, and for equality, and for inclusion that are valid and that are coming from members of our community. But that, those standards apply to all stakeholders. Those standards apply to all people who are engaged in this process. And they have not been, they have not been applied equitably, in my estimation and in my view. So I think it's critical that we do have these discussions. It's critical that we have comprehensive evaluation of all the policy options that are before us, that include all parties involved. And it's my hope that future discussions will be inclusive in that way. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we got Mr. Wood, Ms. Wilson, and the, Ms. Wood and Mr. Ralphs.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate the comments that, that have been, right out here, would you take one and pass it that way? Rosemary, would you take one and pass it? So, and, and I agree, there's no, there's no singular response, and, and there's nothing that, that a lot of these things can do. But there are some things that we can do. You know, we've all seen the videos of the lawlessness, and we've heard from people who, who work and visit down there and live down there. We've heard the police chief say he's in desperate need of more people. We've heard the police chief say, in fact, he's not only in desperate need of his authorized strength, he'd like to see more. You've all received a copy of the budget questions and my, my specific question on the turnover rates, and you can see that we have, we have a crisis here. We've got to take definitive action, we've got to do it now. So I've passed around a letter that you all have, and, and I wanted to talk a little bit about this. We need to be more competitive, and we can't wait for a market survey. And I'm talking about with respect to recruiting and retention of police officers. I didn't, yeah, I know we've got a market salary survey, but I've done, done my own amateur open source survey, if you will. And I can tell you that we aren't the highest paid in the region in many areas. To be fair, we aren't the lowest in the region, but we demand a very high standard, and we have some of the most comprehensive training in the state, if not in the country. And, and our academy attrition rate proves that out. So we have to address both recruitment and retention. We've got to keep in mind that if we hire somebody, if the chief hires a brand-new rookie today, it's going to be several months before he or she enters the academy, it's going to be six months in the academy, it's going to be more months in training, and we won't have the benefit of that officer for the better part of a year. They will not be able to, to be out there doing that. So if we say, well, gosh, we had 20, 20 officers retire, resign, whatever, and we're bringing 20 more in, we are not really getting 20 more in like that. It doesn't work that way. The math doesn't work. So, so my proposal is, and this is outlined in this letter is fairly simple. I'm calling for a five-and-a-half percent structural adjustment across all public safety, and that's police, fire, EMS, sheriff, and across all public safety. Specific to the VBPD, and at least initially, college incentive payments. We used to have college incentive payments, they were discontinued some time ago, we need to bring those back. That's what our competitors ask for, and that's what our competitors advertise, and if we're going to be competitive, that's what we have to do. Specific, again, issues within the VBPD is longevity issues. So I've got longevity increases factored in there as well. And these incentives, the longevity and the college incentive pay would be pensionable. They would be percentages of, of actual income, so they would be pensionable. And that is, that is an exceptionally important thing, specifically with regard to retention. So, and, and the staff was, was kind enough to, to do, do some research for me. I also had some retirees do some research for me as well. And, and a, an officer, an average police officer who retires or separates at 25 years based on a specific salary criteria, if he or she were to stay an additional three years based on these increases, would have a net increase in their retirement of, of anywhere from $200 to $500 a month. So, so that, that's a significant amount. I mean, that's, that's a car payment, it's, you know, part of a rent or mortgage payment or what have you. So it's, it's an important piece. Now, now, I, I hear y'all when you say this about the segments of the community that are concerned about this. I mean, we, we know internally, and we know from our citizen satisfaction survey, that, that community support for the VBPD remains strong. And we have that data, Julie has that data, and we get that every, every two years. But, but there is correct, the department's culture needs to reflect the values of our city. And, and our values are transparency and honesty, and, and I think that's what we do. I believe the officers and the leaders of the Virginia Beach Police Department are proud of their service, and they don't have anything to hide. And I don't, I don't think we ever want to hinder prosecution. I certainly understand where the Commonwealth Attorney goes on this, but we can do better in terms of releasing information. We can do better, and I think we need to. I think, I think you'll see that other agencies around the country do this. And the one I've, I've mentioned to, to the staff in the past is the Los Angeles Police Department. They do a fantastic job. You can go and you can see every critical incident that the LAPD is involved in. They put out body camera video, they put out surveillance footage, they put out transcripts from the 911 calls, they put out the radio calls, everything that you could possibly want on that, they provide. It's factual information. Again, in this, with the one particular incident we're talking about now, we don't have body camera video, but we have other information. So, you know, I'm, as, in addition to calling on my, my fellow members of council to, to embrace this and to, and to direct the city manager to, to implement this as soon as possible, I also want to call on the city manager and the city attorney together to, to work with the Commonwealth Attorney, to, to figure out a way, to craft a strategy on, on how we can get more information out to the public, and in a more timely manner. We have, we have an extraordinarily talented staff that, that can do, do these sorts of things. You know, we, we can do great videos, we can do great press releases, we can do all this, and, and we can tell these, we can tell the story, we can tell the facts. We don't need to, we, we certainly don't want to spend the facts, but we want to get the facts out to the people. I think that's, that's incredibly important. So what, what I would ask my, my colleagues today is first, let, let's solve the problem with respect to public safety compensation. Let's get that done, and then let's continue to work on, on transparency, getting this information out. There is plenty of stuff that we can get out on, on critical incidents, ones that don't even make the newspaper, that, that are just as important to people. I mean, other peoples, you know, family members have been, have been shot, killed, hurt, robbed, everything. And, and they deserve as much justice as, as anyone else, and, and the public deserves the right to, to know this information. So I would ask that y'all take a look at this, I would ask that you join me in, in requesting the manager do this, and that the manager work with the city attorney on, on a more, more transparent city. Thank you.
Okay. We got Ms. Wilson, Ms. Wood and Mr. Ralphs.
Well, there's been so much good discussion here, it's almost, I don't even know where to start. First of all, I'd like to thank the vice mayor for what he's put together to help with compensation, and not just the compensation, but incentives, because we, we've been down 100 police officers, probably as long as I've been on council, which is a long time. But now, our chief says we even need more than that. So this is going to be a really good start to bridging that gap. And I think that, I certainly support you, Jim, on this, and, and I, I hope that the other members of council will as well. And I also want to say thank you to Councilwoman Bellucci for his comments. Michael, you were spot on in what you had to say, and I, I really support that as well. And I also want to thank the city manager for the, the technology and the, the different things that can be done to really help the safety in the city. And I think that this is something the citizens are going to really support, they, they're going to want us to be doing this. So I, I'm hoping that you're going to bring this forward next week. So I did have a question for the chief on, about this state investigation. I mean, I know the state has a lot of things on its plate. Do we have any idea of how much, of how much the state really is going to be, is this a priority for them? Is this something that they're really going to, or is they're going to, you know, what kind of effort are they going to be putting into this to, to really investigate this so we can get our answers? People, and I know things take time and all of that, but things can be moved slowly, and things can be moved more speedily. Do we have any idea, and have you heard anything from the state, of what kind of efforts and priorities that they're going to be putting to this investigation?
Ma'am, I can't speak on behalf of VSP. You know, what I can tell you from some conversations, that in the current environment that we find ourselves in, where there is a lack of trust between local police departments in their community, the Virginia State Police is being asked to take on many more of these. So, you know, I don't know what their capacity is. My understanding is, much like our police department, they're several hundred troopers short. So many communities are asking the same of them that we have. So I'm sure that they have a very untenable burden that they're trying to address the best they can.
And is there any way, anything that we can do to encourage them to make this a higher priority?
You know, what we can offer, if there's anything that we can do that is not related to this investigation, that would free up some of their resources, we would definitely do that.
Okay. Hopefully, we can do whatever we can, because people need answers. We, and I think for this community to be able to move on, we really need to get to the bottom of everything, and that's for, for everyone involved. And we do want the right answers, and we want the transparency. And I applaud you for immediately turning this over so that we have that, so it's not right here with us. So thank you for doing that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Wood and then Mr. Ralphs.
So I just wanted to make some follow-up comments. You know, as it relates to the citizens' review panel, you know, that topic is, is not to be, to be discussed or brought up to frustrate, to infuriate, or, or cause any problems to anybody. The topic is brought up because the citizens bring it up. I can't tell you how many phone calls I get about it, and I've received about the citizens' review panel before any of this ever started. And the process started way back last June. So if anything, it's been a slow walk. It's been a slow walk since that timeframe. And I'm, I'm open, you know, as been mentioned, have a discussion. I like to have the discussion. We just haven't really had a real discussion. The citizens haven't weighed in on it. The police department, that conversation hasn't been had. You're exactly, I mean, Councilmember Bellucci, you're exactly right. But we have to have a serious discussion. We have not had that yet. We have discussed many things, but we have not given the dedication and time to the citizens' review panel. It's bits and pieces, few minutes here, a few minutes there. It needs to be on the agenda. It needs to be on the agenda. It needs to be on the agenda. It needs to be on the agenda, so we can have a discussion, a frank discussion, with all those parties involved. I've all, and I've spoken with Mr. Bellucci about how it affects the police department. I think that's very important. They are key stakeholders. The proposal that I'm submitting for next Tuesday, to have a task force to address, we'll address that item. We'll give a task force an opportunity to say, "How does it affect the police?" And they're researching doing that, guess who they have to talk to? The police! And not just one group, not a union, not, but the police in general, they have to get that information. So I certainly agree with that. They bring the key stakeholders in, support that task force resolution, so we can, you know, have some concrete response and data, how a citizens' review panel will affect the police department. You know, in terms of what's going on now, you know, I'm not going to belittle the citizens' review panel to compare it to insurance, or some of the other things we think we don't need, or we think that doesn't make a, a real difference. When I get insurance, most people say, "You probably won't ever need it. You probably won't ever need it. Why pay for it?" But I get it in case something happens. A citizens' review panel is just that. If you want transparency, if you want to really build that with the community, if you want us all to be working together, we need a citizens' review panel in case things like these happen. So when I see people out holding press conferences, they're not saying, "Well, Virginia Beach has, doesn't have an adequate citizens' review panel, so we can't get behind, you know, the police department or city leadership." That's for the citizens. And all that we're talking about, I think we're leaving out the citizens as it relates to the citizens' review panel. And I think that's very important. This is something that they're asking for, you know? And, and we do have to explore other forms than just the IRP that we have. That's not sufficient. So I will continue to, to promote and advocate for the citizens' review panel because it's needed. And as, just as my other colleagues promote other things they think is needed, I will continue to do that because it is something that our citizens are asking for. And I think it's detrimental to where we are right now. I will also say, I'd like my colleagues to join me in supporting and investing in our youth. When we're in budget season, there are some critical organizations that need funding to help our youth. And all this that we're discussing, we got to have a conversation and make sure we're supporting and investing. supporting and investing in our youth, because we have to address issues before they get to circumstances like what happened at the Oceanfront, to gun violence, to gang activity. We have to catch them and address it before we get there. And so I hope my colleagues will join me in supporting some of those programs that's going to invest in our youth, and that's going to support our youth, to make them better responsible citizens. Thanks.
Ms. Rouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, something is missing from this discussion on council. First, let me start by, you know, stating publicly and very clearly, I'm a proud supporter of police officers, of our Virginia Beach police officers in particular. I think they should be well-paid, I think they should be well-equipped, and more appreciative. I was proud to give numerous speeches at the sheriff's graduations at Lita, I was proud to speak at Policeman Memorial Day at the Oceanfront. I was proud to play basketball with our officers in Lake Edwards and throughout our city and the Bayside area. So I want to thank Councilman Wood for bringing this forward. I think we should definitely take a look at this. And also, I think we should also take a look at the salary compensations for our staff and our entire city as a whole. We are a team. I just want to make sure we don't create any inequities, or we're talking about increasing pay for emergency responders, who are first responders, who is definitely needed. There's also, you know, 911 callers as well, public utilities, public works, economic development staff, our comms director staff. I mean, our entire workforce in the city needs a compensation, a salary raise. But back to this notion, with this discussion we're having, and I just want to unpack some statements. Councilmember Berluci stated, when not only myself and my colleague, Councilman Wooten, called for a CRP being fully funded. A CRP, Citizen Review Panel, being fully funded, doesn't mean that the conversation with key stakeholders will not be had. I think, as I recall, when the mayor brought forth a resolution changing the IRP, the name of the IRP, gee, I believe you were here that night, I stated, we need to have a discussion with our police chief, key stakeholders, to make sure, and everyone involved, to make sure we, the citizens, have a voice on the Citizens Review Panel. So I don't know what omissions Councilman Berluci is speaking of, but you can't have a Citizens Review Panel without info and key input from the chief and other law enforcement officers. But here's the picture when you're looking at it. Right now, we have an ordinance brought forth from us with immediate actions totaling over 1.4 million dollars, which is great and nice support. But when we talk about supporting a Citizens Review Panel, because members within our city have a hard time with trust and faith in our police department, that falls on deaf ears, on this council. It was stated on this council that we don't have to take up the Citizens Review Panel, it can wait, we can look at it later. After Lynn Haven Mall incident, after the death of Mr. Lynch and the death of Mrs. Harris, this is being reactive and not proactive. If we were proactive in having a Citizens Review Panel, this would have much, it would have best served our community by having stronger faith in our officers here. Policing is a tough, tough, tough job. A tough job, especially in today's climate. A Citizens Review Panel is not to make it tougher, it's to make it easier, it's to give trust to a public and a community that's been asking for, been asking for. But this council seems to want to put that by the wayside, and then talk about how much you support the police. If you support the police, help the police build better community relationships. That starts with investing in the Citizens Review Panel, make their job a lot easier. Don't just show up with myself and other officers and play basketball with the kids, store football, come around and say all the notable words, inclusiveness, diversity, and we want to make our community safe, and, no. Get on the ground, walk in their shoes, walk in the neighborhood shoes where I grew up Go out Twin Canal, see the little kids that scared to go outside in the daytime because of shooting. Talk to those parents who want to say, well, we don't want us to want to talk to the police, but we want them to do something about it. That's a distrust there. How do we build that bridge? We're going to make sure our men and women are, I want to make sure at least, that they're well-paid, they're well-equipped, and appreciative. That last part, appreciative, that comes from building trust within a community. How do we do that, Citizens Review Panel? With key stakeholders, with tough conversations. That makes their job a lot easier. So this omission of omitting key stakeholder, I don't know, I don't know where my councilman colleague got that from, but again, if we can put 1.4 some million dollars with a snap of a finger towards it, we can make sure we have a Citizens Review Panel as well. And I just want to go on record again and say thank you, chief, thank you to our officers. I know it's tough, I know policing is a tough job, and again, I know you hold officers accountable to the highest standard of serving our community. But that same thing goes for when we have a Citizens Review Panel. It can build trust back within our community, and that's something I think we should invest in as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Henley.
I would just say that in this report that I referenced earlier, the final report of the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing, recommendation 2.8 addresses civilian oversight of law enforcement, and there are two action items that they also recommended. I think having the benefit of this and the work that was done as a part of that is important in looking overall at this whole question of civilian oversight. It's being addressed, it's been addressed, and I think we need the benefit of what they have, their findings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Blue.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just take a moment to respond to, I think, very passionate and very authentic comments that were shared by my colleague, Mr. Rouse, and my friend, Mr. Rouse. But I think he asked a question a couple of times, is where did I come up with the omission? Well, it's obvious. The process did not include the key stakeholders, the process to date. And I, like my colleague, Mr. Rouse, and like I know every member of this body and our city staff and community, are very interested, very concerned, and very invested in building trust, respect, and understanding. In fact, I've spent the better part of the last year just doing that in a variety of applications, investing every aspect of my humanity that I can in those very efforts. So it's something that I take incredibly serious, and it's a goal and a virtue for a community that I place in the highest priority. And that's why I feel so passionate about the need for including everyone into the conversation. And there has been an omission, because in fact, this body, this council, has been asked to move forward with the adoption of a civilian review board with specific provisions. And I want to be clear about what those specific provisions are. One, subpoena power. Two, investigative authority. And we don't even know exactly what those elements mean in terms of legal definition, or how they would impact not only the men and women of our police department, but members of our community as well, who interact with law enforcement and who are witnesses to interactions with law enforcement. So at our retreat, we were asked to basically greenlight or redlight the adoption of a civilian review board with those specific provisions. What we haven't done is consider and analyze all elements of what could be possible in a civilian review board, or further elements of civilian oversight. And I think what that does is it shorts, that shorts not only members of our community, but also the men and women who place their own safety at risk to protect us. And so the omission is glaring, the omission is clear, the omission is obvious and evident. And it's because of my commitment to the virtues that you described, Mr. Rouse, that I'm so interested and concerned about the need for including everyone in the conversation. And I am 100% committed to all of those elements of transparency, accountability, and I think there is a role for, it's an obvious role, for civilian oversight of law enforcement, civilian and accountability. And in fact, we should be proud of the fact that we're the only community in Hampton Roads that has any form of civilian oversight. And now, I recognize that there are many people who feel that that oversight is lacking, that it's not sufficient, as my colleague and friend, Ms. Wooten, says, and those are valid critiques. So let's figure out where does the common ground lie? Where can we build trust and transparency and accountability across the board? Because the plan that's been advanced that I'm aware of will create trust and accountability over here and diminish it over here. So the scales are constantly out of balance. So how can we work together to create that balance, that trust, that mutual respect, understanding and trust? These are complicated discussions, and they're goals that are very difficult to achieve. But rushing through one plan or the next will not get us there. And that's my really fervent, personal, deep-held view, and that's why I think it's so critical that we include those stakeholders, such as the PBA and the Police Supervisors Association, who have been omitted. Now, as has been pointed out, they don't represent every police officer or every police supervisor, but they certainly represent many, and I mean no disrespect to the chief or police leadership, but having the chief or police leadership alone engaged in these discussions does not represent, and I repeat, does not represent the entirety of our law enforcement personnel. And I know you do a very good job of representing the position, but it's not a full and complete representation. So it's up to us, if we're really going to have this conversation, if we're really going to build trust, respect, and understanding, then let's do it together. Thank you.
And Mr. Rouse.
I want to thank you, Michael, Councilmember Berluci. I want to thank you, and I appreciate your passion, and I think you are, you're absolutely right. I think it would best serve not only our council, but our city, to have that discussion, that rather tough discussion, and find that balance. And I am one to, I'll champion that, I'm welcome, I'm open to all of my colleagues having that discussion rather soonly, I think it'd best serve us having that sooner than later. And so I thank you for your comments as well. I think what we're after is the same thing, and I think there are some things we can iron out with all stakeholders involved, but the discussion must be had and rather soon. Thank you.
Okay. I'll tell you, if at this point, if I could just make a couple of comments to kind of summarize things. You know, the way I read the tea leaves right now is I see maybe two competing resolutions coming forward, one with the subpoena power, investigative power, and another one, an enhanced version of what we're going to do. And as a result of this, there will be community discussion, let's have, you know, a separate public hearing on it, you know, let's bring the stakeholders to the dinner, and then figure it out. But I think the ultimate goal of what we want to do is fix the problem and the problems. And what is going to get us there in a win-win situation that will get this there, without putting excessive burdens or, you know, causing other, you know, sometimes the rules of unintended consequences rear the ugly head in government. But that being said, Mr. Rouse, I do agree, Mr. Berluci, I agree, you know, let's, you know, let's put the plans into a document that we could sit down and talk about, bring the public in to weigh in on them, and then react accordingly, and I think we can do that in short order. And you know, the other thing is, I'll let you know, I participated with the other mayors in the 757 last night in a discussion. And I'll tell you what, you know, we're not alone out there. Virginia Beach is, you know, not unique in having the problems that we're having. Many of the mayors are having some problems, perhaps even to a degree more. But there was a lot of consensus that we were able to come, you know, and we have to meet more often, because, you know, gang violence, youth violence, or violence in general, which is happening nationally, you know, we're not immune here in Hampton Roads. And this type of actions don't have borders where it stops. And so coming across unified, but the one thing we all agree, we have to treat people with respect and dignity, which may be kind of lost these days, you know, in, you know, the discussions going on nationally and locally. But the other thing is to, we want, and you know, I brought this up, and there was some good consensus, we want people to come to Virginia Beach, but, you know, but we do have to make sure that people come here and be respectful and, you know, obey the law, so everyone feels safe. So ultimately, this is the goal of what we want to have, and, you know, in terms of what we have to do. And the other thing is, that was a consensus with the mayors last night, was the fact, and it was mentioned here, government cannot do this by ourself, and there has to be that community engagement, and it has to be almost a retooling of, you know, societal influences about what goes on. And then, that's the community embracement that I think that we can have to do, not only as a city, but in the 757, throughout the Commonwealth, and through the nation. So, but once again, we'll keep you informed on what goes on with the mayor's meeting. And if I could just, maybe if we could leave this with an action item, would anybody object to ask Mr. DeHaney to move forward and get some information about the impacts of the vice mayor's recommendation? Would it be okay to move forward? Okay, great. Tell you what, at this point, do we want a short break, or, you know, get right into?
Let's keep going.
Okay, Mrs. Henley decided, okay? We'll keep moving, if we can, you know.
You want to keep the still standing, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council.
Oh, thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, at this time, we're going to move on with the regular. The first presentation is at the request of Councilmember Berluci. The MOCA will come and present on a strategic plan on their 2021-2022 path forward.
Welcome.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and hello to you all. Thank you so much for having us, the museum, to present. I'm just going to fast forward to a slide that I think is relevant right now, which is just to look at what the mission of the museum is. As we start to think about, you know, in light of the conversation that we were just having, about how do we take a holistic approach to building our society and to reaffirming our commitment to each other, I just want to point to the mission of the museum, which is that we're an ever-changing institution where everyone, what, neighbors, strangers, students, families, communities, and cultures of all types are invited to explore, and this is super important, our shared humanity. I firmly believe that the role of a museum and a community is not about the presentation of art, but about the fostering of empathy through the experience of art and the stories and histories and backgrounds of people who may or may not be like you. And having us understand and plumb how we are more similar than we are different. And that is our goal as a museum, and I hope that you see it as an asset in the toolbox of this community to help that kind of 360 holistic approach. in the toolbox of this community to help, help that kind of 360 holistic approach that we've all been talking about as a result of, of what happened so recently and has been happening for a while. So I'm just going to go back to the front, which is, I just want to let you know that we've been up and running throughout the pandemic. Even though our building was closed, our museum was open because we are committed to serving our community, regardless of whether there's a pandemic in place or not. We don't have any type of endowment and we had limited financial reserves. So our other priority was really buying time. How could we keep the museum functioning in this manner, serving the community? And that resulted in us taking extreme cost-cutting measures in the past year. We actually reduced our staffing to 40% of its level. We all took pay cuts. We amended our hours of operation. And yet we still maintained our focus on our strategic priorities and on the priority of serving this community. So really, we've initiated, I was here about a year ago talking to you about a pretty grand strategic plan. And, and the world had different ideas, but we didn't keep, but take our eye off the ball. We were really dedicated to fiscal and operational stability so that we can make it through the pandemic. We had four months of cash reserves and operating reserves and didn't know if we were going to make it past that point. But, but with the hard, hard work of our board, many of whom are in the audience this afternoon and our staff, we've done it. We've also taken the work that we deployed in our strategic planning process and kept them as our north stars moving forward. And that was really about art, about a brand that well represents the, not only the museum, but really the city. And we take that brand out in everything that we do, which is extensive, and to make sure that we are truly a place of inclusivity and, and community embracement. The past year, we've been able to offer free admission because it's been underwritten by Centerra and now PNC. And I'm happy to report that an individual donor has stepped up and continued to underwrite free admission for the upcoming year. We're, we are committed in many ways to removing the barriers of access and, and experience at the museum. We also take being a pillar. Our, our aim and our goal is to be one of the strong pillars of the Virginia Beach brand. Not just the boardwalk and the beach and the aquarium and the fun things and the, and punggol and food, but also arts and culture. And that, this inclusive experience that is programming exhibitions that have been in the works for years, that really bring together and speak to the lives of all the members of our community is really important to us. And as you'll see on this slide, the community is responding. We, our fundraising efforts historically have been a little anemic, but we have really picked that up. And you'll notice in the past three years that the private funding has risen by 150%. And just so you know, I was struck by a conversation we had the other, I heard the other, other council meeting. Our private donations are about $1.7 million of our budget. And it is augmented by the additional money that we get from the city, which in the past year was 760 and what in this year is proposed at $760,000. And I am asking you for an incremental amount above that to market a significant exhibition that is coming, that is coming to Virginia Moca a year from now, and that's the work of Maya Lynn. So this just shows you, and I just want to say thank you so much for your support up to date. As you know, the art is what distinguishes us, but also distinguishes the city and the region. We stream, we work with curators and artists from all over the country. And the Virginia Beach name and brand goes with us as we make those connections and reach out. We worked really hard. This is Catherine, one of our, our educators, who has been broadcasting live from the, from the galleries, not only to the children in Virginia Beach, but we also are broadcasting to children in Chicago, New York, Canada, via a streamable learning where we're, again, taking that brand of Virginia Beach via Virginia Moca out across the country and, and spreading the good word about all that Virginia Beach has to, has to offer. As I mentioned, we, we opened up as soon as was safe, which was the middle of July. And, and in addition to opening, in terms of other efforts, we launched our bilingual audio tour. So now, moving forward as of July, the audio tours at the museum are not only in English, but also in Spanish. So how did this play? The good news is 60% of the people who came to the Shifting Gaze Exhibition, which was at record levels, similar to the Michael Kagan Exhibition, which had before pre-pandemic, were from outside of Virginia Beach. 60%. So if we think about this as a tourism industry, tourism driver, an engagement driver, as a really interesting counter-narrative to what is going on at Virginia Beach, it's working. We had 5,000 onsite visitors. We had almost 35,000 people participate virtually. And you can see that we really, we really covered, covered the eastern seaboard. And how did audiences feel when they came? These are direct quotes. Loved my first experience. Can't, can't wait to come back. Very important work. So glad it is here. And we were recognized by the Hampton Roads Community Action Program for our efforts in community building by being awarded the Community Builders Award this year based on the Shifting Gaze Exhibition, which was the presentation of work by, of contemporary art by individuals of color. Last year, the city graciously granted us some money to support our marketing efforts, and this is what we spent it on. We generated 10,000 impressions to support our Shifting Gaze Exhibition. And not only were we covered extensively in the region at a time when we were trying to draw, we were trying to engender drive-in business to Virginia Beach, but we also had significant exposure across the country and in the southeast. Again, positioning Virginia Beach via Virginia Moca as a progressive, interesting, inclusive destination. Right now, currently on view is an exhibition, a suite of exhibitions that share the, share the topic of food. We took our limited exhibition budget, which was cut in half, if not more, due to our cost-cutting measures, and spent the bulk of our exhibition money in commissioning the work of local artists, which are now on display and talk about the range of food-related issues that occupy the hearts and minds of the members of this community. And it ranges from beekeepers to food justice issues and everything in between. Again, showcasing our area and what we are thinking and caring about as a citizenry. And how has this been going? We're only halfway through this exhibition. Again, the marketing money that was, was granted to us via the city has been put to good use halfway through. Again, about 60% of our, our visitors are from outside Virginia Beach. What you'll also know is the majority, the large majority are not currently members. And we are, we're increasing the new-to-file people who we can communicate with by the thousands with each exhibition. So to date, the money that the city has invested in Virginia Moca has yielded 8,000 media impressions, and we're only halfway through. So we're looking at somewhere between 20 and 25,000 media impressions that will all be of the ilk that we see here in, on the pulse, which is "Nourish the Soul." Virginia Moca's latest exhibition is about enriching the soul, the land and each other. Which is, if we think about, just the conversations we've been privy to this morning, I mean, this afternoon, I think that brand affiliation and that language and messaging seems particularly poignant right now. What I'd also let you know is we've been investing in the time. The Boardwalk Art Show was something that was not able to move forward, but we were given the permission to repurpose that money and focus on the brand identity. We launched a virtual presentation on the web, which gave us two websites. And we've been working on getting to one. And so we, we will be in June or in July launching a new brand identity, which you see up here, we're revealing it for the first time, and also a new website. And again, this is about, this is a calling card, not just for Virginia Moca, but also for Virginia Beach. One of the fun things that's going to happen this fall is Ryan McGinnis is a Virginia Beach-born-and-bread artist who now calls Manhattan home. He's collected internationally and nationally. He's in the collection of the Museum of Modern Art, et cetera. We are doing a joint partnership with WRV, where we're going to be creating a capsule collection of T-shirts, skateboards and skate, and surfboards, which will go on sale and be published, and will be publicized across the country and around the world, linking kind of creativity, WRV, and, and a world-class artist. The types of publication, we're working with a publicist from the Museum of Modern Art, is helping us with our press strategy. And we're going to go beyond just the usual suspects. We're going to be talking to New York Magazine and Forbes and the New York Times and the Wall Street Journal and the Washington Post, in addition to local newspapers. Again, it's the type of press that the Chrysler Museum just received in the Wall Street Journal two weeks ago when they had a great send-up of their exhibition on, on Americans in Spain. That is the level of publicity and effort that we are undertaking on behalf of the museum and the city. Coming this summer is a really, is another very poignant. COVID has, has wreaked havoc on women in general in the workforce. And we think that it's going to be a great time to celebrate women and the roles they play and the efforts they make to support, to support us in a suite of exhibitions that is entitled "The Summer of Women," followed in the fall by a celebration of the artists who are making work in Virginia. And this is also going to be juried, as we have in the past, by a nationally-recognized art historian and curator who has, who has connections throughout the eastern seaboard and across the country and who will provide, and the Moca will provide visibility to our artists, to these really superior and tastemakers in the art world. And again, putting Virginia on the map. But most importantly, what I'm here to talk to you about today is the fact that this time next year, we will be opening up an exhibition, a solo exhibition of the work of Maya Lynn. For you who may not be familiar with Maya Lynn, she was the Yale MF grad student who was granted the commission to build the Vietnam War Memorial Vet, War Memorial in Washington, DC. She's gone on to have solo exhibitions in Michigan, just north of New York City, Orlando, Nevada, Pittsburgh. And what's great is the next time this slide is published, Virginia Beach is going to be on the top of that list of places where she's had a solo exhibition. And that is what I'm here to ask you for, is to help us let the world know that Maya Lynn is going to be here and is going to be creating work that speaks to our environment. She's going to be creating bespoke work that celebrates the Chesapeake Bay, which is one of her favorite bodies of work, I mean, bodies of water, and really tackling the environmental issues and helping make concrete for citizens some really abstract concepts when it comes to climate change and the impact that sea level rise could have on our communities and help motivate us to generate change of behavior in our communities. So I can't be more excited to, to, to be a conduit by which that Virginia Beach becomes a member of this illustrious group of cities that have welcomed a solo exhibition by Maya Lynn. This is the type, if we were to get to the funding that we're requesting, which is an incremental $300,000, like I mentioned, we will be personally raising the $350,000 to bring the exhibition to the museum. What we need from council is a green light on an incremental $300,000 to, to support marketing. So again, a dollar spent on marketing Maya Lynn for Virginia Moca is a dollar spent marketing Virginia Beach, both locally, regionally, nationally and internationally. And these are just in the past week, the types of press that Maya Lynn has garnered. We also believe that there will be an exhibition of her personal practice at the Smithsonian at the same time our exhibition will be up. So there will be a very nice, we'll work together with them to kind of message the fact that you can come here and see her work and her expression, as well as understand her, her practice. In addition, of that $300,000, $275,000 will be going towards the marketing, which would be meant to ramp up really the regional and national investment. We currently spend $30,000 to $50,000. And that gets, that is well and good, but for, to maximize the impact on this, we believe a multi-fold investment is warranted. One of the things, $25,000 of that $300,000, we're asking, the city has been out, we've been working with the SGA office and Emily Archer and Kathy Warren to really look at the grounds. Moca grounds have really, have not been attended to in any major way in the past 20 years. And it's been determined that it would take $25,000 just to clean up the Moca grounds so it presents, it presents as well as possible when the people who are coming next summer and living here for the summer, come to the museum and experience the museum, that it would really be the best face forward for not only the museum, but also the city. So this is what the request looks like. The, the 25 and the 275 at the bottom of the FY22 column is the incremental request above what is already in the city manager's budget. What, what you may not know is, one of the things that really kind of was, was so challenging for us is that we rely on our rental revenue to help power our, our, our operations. And because of the restrictions that were placed on gatherings by the governor, our rental revenue went from basically $300,000 a year to zero. So despite that, we were able to generate, generate exceptional exhibits and attendance, and a lot of the members of the community stepped up. But it's very hard to replace all that money. And that's why we need to come to you and ask you for your help in helping us tell a wonderful story about Virginia Beach and about an exceptional experience. And it will be here April through September. So she will, so we will be promoting the Maya Lynn exhibition during the shoulder season. And also during this season where there are a number of people from Charlottesville and Richmond and Washington, DC, who have summer places here. I don't know the degree to which they engage with the city beyond sitting on the beach, but I'm hoping that this is, will be one reason for them to get to know more about and be excited about what Virginia Beach has to offer as, as a cultural destination. So thank you so much, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Gary, thank you so much, and I enjoyed the tours I've been on at your place. You got a remarkable staff and have done an incredible job, given the challenges. Any questions?
Rosemary, then Mr. Tower.
Gary, thank you so much for bringing this forward and, and also for you and your donors and staff for keeping things going through this past year. It's, it's been hard on everyone, but especially for our nonprofit friends. Just a couple of questions. So this money you want to be spending on marketing, just wanted, I have a two-part question. Where are you planning on spending it? And had you thought about working with our advertising committee from the city and working with them through the advertising that they do for, for the city?
Absolutely. We are, so the press plan is to, is to use social media as well as print and digital outlets. I don't have the media plan right in front of us, but the $275,000 has been divided amongst, over the course of the run of the show to make sure that we were getting, getting the word out that the exhibition was available for view to all, to the places that we need to get it out to. We work very closely with the CVB and, and understanding how they spend and what their target markets are. I think it behooves the city not to have all advertising coming from a city source. And that using the Virginia Moca as a means to talk about the city without it being the city directly is a benefit to the city. And we do take leads from city directly is a benefit to the city, and we do take leads from, we do take leads from CVB as to where we should be investing regionally and matching up with the same investment profile that they're taking.
Okay, Mr. Tower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Gary. Very good presentation. I really believe this Maya Lin exhibition is, is potentially transformative for Moka and for Virginia Beach. Anyone who's ever seen the Vietnam Memorial must be struck in an emotional way, whether or not you had friends or family involved, and, you know, it, it rises out of the ground. It is, it's really earthwork, and this is an opportunity to see her talking about nature that we live in, that we are the center of, that we are the key piece of the Chesapeake Bay and the surrounding area. It ties in with our, our environmental awareness in terms of, of the, both the huge amounts of money that we're spending, but also all the input that we've gotten from the community and the, and the most sensitive communities, and, and Virginia Beach, like many other areas, the areas that are most prone to the problems are, of course, the areas that often have a lot of people that are also most prone to other kinds of, of problems as well. I, I, I can't wait for it. I think the amount of money that Moka is asking for in this particular case, in the overall scheme of things, is a insignificant part of, of, would be an insignificant part of our budget, but really, it's a great, great opportunity to tell the Virginia Beach story that we are an inclusive and diverse and have significant things to offer to many people who may or may not be also attracted to the beach and our rivers and, and outdoors. Some, some are real just art freaks. I mean, they will, they'll follow art, and they'll come from long distances to see this, and they will tell many people about it. This will pay off big time. I'm reminded somewhat, and I haven't talked to Gary about this, about when Dale Chuhuli was here a number of years ago, and now you see in, in Norfolk, and, well, you see a Chuhuli piece in, in, at Moka as well, but, but the Glass Studio in Norfolk just shows that, that one exhibition really can have a dramatic effect on an entire community, and that's why I'm excited about it. I also think, want to credit Gary for, for the private support she's garnered. I mean, we really, the, if you saw that chart, I mean, they are really going in the right direction, and I think this is a way we can further incentivize private donations and keep, keep this going. I just, I, I couldn't be more enthusiastic about the project and more appreciative of Gary, her staff, and Scott, and the other leadership of the private sector that has stepped up to support Moka in its time of need. As Gary said, you know, a year ago, they, they had, I, I remember being and talking to Gary there, I think it was in, he sat there, "What are we going to do? I mean, we've got three or four months' worth of cash and everything's shutting down." So it's a great story. Thank you, Gary. Thanks to all of you for what you've, what you've done, and I'll certainly do my best to see if we can't find a way to do, get this in the budget.
Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say, hey, Gary, thank you for, for everything, your, your work that you do with Moka, and, and your drive within our community. I think it, Moka reaches far beyond just the confinement down there at your location, but throughout Virginia Beach as well, and I just want to say thank you, and did you want to introduce, you know, your supporters?
I would love to. Thank you so much, Gary. I mean, Councilman Ross.
I'd like to introduce our board chair, Scott Duncan, and our incoming board chair, Nicole Nadahorsky, one of our board members, Anne Fleeter, and also a board and a member of John Katsias. And there are a lot of people watching virtually. So, I, we have a tremendous board, and they're incredibly supportive, and they've stepped up really in this time of need to make sure that Virginia Moka was able to, to continue to serve Virginia Beach and its citizenry through art.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Buluchi, and Ms. Wooton.
Please, Ms. Wooton, I'll defer to you first.
Thank you very much for that. Ms. Ryan, just want to echo the sentiments and gratitude of this leadership, just for your dedication, passion. I certainly want to thank your board as well for all that you do to make Virginia Beach great. Moka is certainly a pillar of our community, and I can tell you, when I've been down to visit the museum, I've always been able to participate in exhibits of the highest caliber, and they have really, really been transformative in our community, and I think now is a good time to be supportive of the arts more than ever. With all that we have going on that seems to be so negative, it's important to have something positive like our arts and Moka and our community, and I want you to know that I'm very happy to support you and what you're doing, and happy to support your effort and the funding that you need.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Buluchi.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Ms. Ryan, and thank you to all the members and supporters of Moka who are here with us today. I just want to take this opportunity, as a person who's worked as a museum professional for the last 10 years, to share my, some of my reflections about the impact that Moka has had on our community, and that, and that art museums and museums in general have on our community, and as well that public investment in cultural institutions like Moka have on our community. You know, an art museum is not a rarefied place for certain people. Art museums are institutions that are meant to welcome everyone, and are meant to, really, as Ms. Ryan, I think, very poignantly described, speak to our humanity, to connect us better as humans, to help us better understand our past, our present, and our future, and I think Moka has a record of delivering on that in a variety of different applications. I've seen Moka, just in the last several years, for example, focus on key, important issues such as mental health, such as race relations, such as sea level rise, and our environment, climate change, food insecurity, and the list goes on and on and on about the key, the most important issues of our day that Moka is bringing to light, that Moka is initiating dialogue about, and that Moka is breaking down barriers in terms of welcoming all members of our community into those spaces, whether it's virtually or physically, to have meaningful, important dialogues about those very issues. The type of dialogues that I think is critical that we have in this, in this council and throughout our community, and in fact, Moka has, just speaking on behalf of myself, opened its doors, has welcomed hospitably young people and representatives from law enforcement to talk about how to improve those relations, and we did that just last summer, and it was a meaningful and really impactful conversation that I think all parties walked away from, with not all the answers, having a better understanding of the perspectives of each other, and that's just what we need in Virginia Beach, that's just what we need, I think, in our community. And what was really special about that for me, as a person who works in museums, is that, is that the exhibition, "Shifting Gaze," was the catalyst by which, was the initiator for that dialogue, and that's what art exhibitions, that's what museums do, and I think Moka has done it beautifully. And I, and I really want to bring out for the record the importance of understanding that investing in arts, culture, and humanity is not in conflict with some of the other priorities that we have as a community, because they're often presented to us as if they are in conflict, and that's a problematic presentation, in my view. And I would go further to say that investing in arts, culture, and humanity is demonstrated to show extraordinarily high return on investment relative to other forms of public investment. And so as I think you pointed out very, very well, investing in Moka, whether it's in the educational programs that Moka presents, whether it's in the cultural programs that Moka presents, or just making sure that the doors are open and that the museum is accessible to all people, is a very, very wise investment, not only from a cultural and humanities point of view, but also from an economic point of view, from economic development perspective, from driving tourism, and that's particularly important for our community now as we think about some of the challenges that we face at the resort, and how desperately in need we are of a positive narrative of good news out of the resort, not only out of the resort, but out of our city. So when we think about how the public, and I also would point out that studies demonstrate that the public, members of our public, in case anyone's concerned or worried, are supportive of public investment in arts, culture, and humanities. They're supportive of that, and that's pretty well documented. And so I, I just think that it's really important that we consider this request, not only for the impact that Moka has on our community, but for really our entire tourism infrastructure, hospitality infrastructure, resort infrastructure, and also our educational and cultural infrastructure. So I thank you for bringing this to us, I thank you for everything you do, and I, and I look forward to continuing to work to find new and innovative ways to support Moka and, and to seeing this incredible exhibition. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Good. And Gary, thank you to you and your magnificent staff. You are truly a jewel of Virginia Beach.
Thank you so much, Mayor Dyer, and you guys have a nice afternoon.
Thank you. Folks, at this point, let's take a short break. Folks, at this point, let's take a short break.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at the request of Councilmember Tower, Eva Poole, the library's director, is going to give an update on the library's strategic vision.
Hi, Eva.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of City Council. It has now been a year since the pandemic turned our lives upside down, yet despite the closures, libraries found a way to serve our community. We adjusted to the conditions and responded to our library users. We pivoted to deliver more information digitally and to support online learning, and we continue to adapt by implementing a new five-year strategic plan for 2021 through 2025, as well as completing a long-range strategic visioning plan, which I am pleased to share with you today. In the fall of 2019, the City of Virginia Beach initiated a process to develop a strategic vision of plan for our library system. The local architectural firm HBA Architects and Interior Design, in partnership with Library Planning and Design, were commissioned to facilitate this process. The plan was finalized in February of this year. The primary goal of our strategic visioning plan was to evaluate the needs of our community, user groups, and identify services, demands, and trends in library services that are not addressed in our current facilities or through existing outreach. To achieve this goal, the architects first met with library administration staff and then did walkthroughs through all 10 of our locations. The architects also held numerous stakeholder meetings with all of the city and community groups listed on this slide. At each of these meetings, they discussed the role, importance of, and the division of, vision of library services and facilities. Overall, this process confirmed that our community values and appreciates the high level of service our library system provides, including our collection, technology, and our knowledgeable staff. The plan establishes a long-range service delivery. This framework was developed with the knowledge that today library users expect more than the basics. They expect a customer-centric experience that lives up to the expectations and standards set by the private sector. Library users want physical spaces that have technology, especially high-speed internet connections, and they want flexible library spaces that accommodate various group sizes and are comfortable and conducive to their preferred usage. Library users feel that a comprehensive, consistent application of technology in all of our public meeting spaces would make our facilities not only feasible but state-of-the-art and a true destination. Specific challenges that residents cited as having impacts on current library services are limited space within many of our current facilities, limited hours of operation, especially the lack of evening hours in our libraries, which limits the number and type of library programs, as well as their availability for the use of community and neighborhood meetings. There are multiple access issues for some residents, and both distance and lack of transportation that make it difficult to visit a library facility and therefore our collections and services. And public transportation is not readily available to many of our library facilities. The sizes and locations of existing library facilities do not reflect our current population densities. One specific opportunity that customers enthusiastically expressed were the temporary library express centers that we had at the Princess Anne Rec Center and at the Fairfield Shopping Center, when we had express locations there, when our Princess Anne Library and Kempsville Library were being renovated. Both of these collaborative efforts, when they were in operation, were very successful and extremely valued by the respective communities served. The strategic visioning plan addresses our lack of sufficient space for programs and services and the additional square footage needed in our locations, both inside our library facilities with reorganization, prioritization, and with some expansion or replacement, and outside the facilities through partnerships with Parks and Recreation and additional automated services. It recommends long-range strategies to support improved and expanded library service delivery, concentrating on physical space. This map shows the location of all 10 library locations. Five of our library facilities were renovated last year, and they are Bayside, Central, Kempsville, Princess Anne, and Punggol Blackwater. Windsor Wood is currently being renovated, and Great Neck and Oceanfront are scheduled to be renovated later this year. None of these renovations include additional floor space. Our strategic visioning plan, therefore, estimates the need for 30, 80,000 to 90,000 additional square footage in our library facilities to support current population density, with a recommendation that we locate library kiosks within areas of the community when it is not feasible to build brick-and-mortar buildings. The plan recommends that we replace Kemp, uh, Great Neck Library, which is located adjacent to Forest Station Number Eight, by locating a new 30,000-square-foot library on a more major thoroughfare in the area, that we expand Kempsville Library by approximately 8,000 square feet to provide meeting space and collaboration spaces, as well as enlarge children's and teen area, expand Princess Anne Library by approximately 4,000 square feet to provide additional program and meeting space, teen area, and group study rooms, expand Windsor Woods Library by approximately 2,000 square feet to provide a larger meeting room, enlarge children's area, and group study rooms. The strategic visioning plan recommends that we build a new joint-use Parks and Recreation Library Facility in the Centerville area, and the library should be approximately 18,000 square feet with shared meeting and program space. The plan recommends that we build a new Western Bayside-Williams Farm Library, and the library would be a minimum of 20,000 square feet in order to provide a full-service library for this community. And finally, build a new joint-use Parks and Rec Library Facility in the Sea-Tac area, and the library should be approximately 18,000 square feet with shared meeting and program space. So the following next steps of our strategic plan are identified, with the final step recommending that libraries work directly with Parks and Recreation to develop joint-use agreements, which would be critical in establishing the amount of square footage needed to provide adequate library services. And this plan concludes with the projected timeline and three multiple-year phases. The first recommendation listed in years 2021 to 2025 is to implement the use of kiosk to expand library services. And then here's two pictures of what a kiosk looks like. These can be conveniently placed where needed. They are vending-type systems, which allow customers 24/7, 365-day access and to check out materials, select materials as well. Kiosks can also be Wi-Fi enabled, further bridging the digital divide and allowing customers to download content to either their smartphone or tablet as well. Customers can also return their physical materials to any of these kiosks located in our library system.
I'm now happy to answer any questions that you might have about our visioning.
Any questions? Tell you what, I thank you, Mr. Tower.
I just want to thank Eva for putting this vision together. This is not her 21, 22 budget request. This is a visioning project, but I think it's really helpful to have the long-range view, and it seems to me to be a very sensible one with a reachable goal. I do think these kiosks are something that we really should focus on. They've been enormously popular. I think probably the advent of the Amazon lockers have gotten people used to the idea of going into shopping center areas, areas where they can get to, where they can almost always find a ride, because somebody's always going to Whole Foods or Walmart or somewhere like that that's nearby. And people are used to using, become used to using Amazon lockers by the millions. So I've never used one myself, but I think that's had a big, probably had a big impact on people being very comfortable with these kiosks.
Have you ever used a Redbox machine?
I've not, but I've watched, I've watched many people as I'm standing in the grocery line do it, so I think I could do it myself.
Yes. And ours would be free, because you just need a library card.
Right.
You don't have to pay.
Yeah. No, it's great outreach and really taking, taking library services to the people where they need it. And I also, of course, the broadband issue, libraries' contribution to bringing the internet to all citizens of Virginia Beach, it's an incredibly important link, and I'm sure it will continue to be. My hope is that the library will, will sort of set the standard for technology, rather than trail technology. Libraries are great places to try out technology, the advances. And what that does is bring not just the people who are high, high users of technology, but it lets people know what's coming next, so they can have some understanding of where their current technology fits in. I mean, there's no reason in the world Virginia Beach can't be a real leader in library technology. It already is in the state, but I mean, a national leader, which is, hearkens back to the discussion we just had about MOKA. So some things we do very, very well in Virginia Beach, and libraries is one of them. The public surveys, as long as I've been associated with the library board, and that's been a long time now, sometimes we lose out to the fire department.
But only the fire department.
But only the fire department, and not every time. So we, we've got a great track record. Thanks, Eva, for all you and your great staff are doing.
Thank you.
And Ms. Wood.
Just want to say thank you, Ms. Poole, for just your dedication and just how you are able to still allow citizens to enjoy those amenities of the library, even through a pandemic, just all the creative ways. I really appreciate that. I know that can be challenging, so thank you for that. And I was happy to see in that whole project and vision, a proposed Centerville Library and Rec Center. That makes me smile.
Great.
Makes me happy. Thank you for including that information. I appreciate it.
If it could happen, it would make me smile as well.
Yes, yes. That's how I feel. It can happen.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next council briefing will be an update on the, in Virginia Beach's mobile portal, at the request of Councilmember Rouse.
Welcome.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I'm Chris Golding. I'm the app development team lead for the city's IT department, and I'm here today to give you all an update on the One Stop Shop application that I had talked about a couple of months ago. The application's now known as VB Connect 3.0. It's our next, next version of our VB Connect application. So some of the high-level goals that we had for this app were to develop a citizen-centric application that brings data from different systems together to provide citizens, citizens with a one-stop shop to interact with the city. So it was meant to bring in things like billing and payments, account service, or account info, and other services. All this while increasing interaction with citizens by providing them with a personalized dashboard, push notifications, and integrating with city platforms and applications that they already use. All this while doing, while integrating with VBGOV.com and the upcoming VirginiaBeach.gov seamlessly. And we want the application to be available on Android, iOS, and the web. The application, we're looking to, or we're delivering it in multiple phases. The goal with delivering multiple phases that we're able to gain feedback from users, which will help us get insight and adapt to their changing needs and requirements. So today, we're kind of going to take a look at the first phase, which we're launching very soon. And the goals of the first phase were to lay out the foundation for our future phases, introduce a personalized dashboard that displays data to citizens that don't, doesn't require authentication, so we use the citizen's address that they provide to bring in property data, information about their nearest facilities, voting information, and their trash and recycling schedule. And then it has support also for push notifications and the ability to send, for push notifications to send alerts and emergency updates to citizens. So since, since I last presented something to you all, we launched a beta to city employees back in the middle of December. Then we expanded that out to citizens in the middle of January, and then we did a survey to help name the application. We gave citizens a few options, and VB Connect was what they had, had chosen. And the goal right now is for us to go live sometime next week. Just right now, we're pending approval by Apple and Google as we submit it through their app stores. So the results of engaging citizens and city employees to test the app were that we had 241 testers register. Of that, 207 of them were actually active with, with testing. They used the app quite a bit. We had 541 sessions with average user used, used it at least 3.2 times. They used 200, or they viewed 2,000 screens in it. We did, we released nine versions of the application through the beta period, and we got a ton of feedback, got 45 pieces of feedback from citizens, which may not sound like a huge amount, but for the apps that we've released in the past and the betas that we've done, we really haven't gotten a huge amount of feedback, so this is probably more than we've received for all of our apps combined. So I was extremely excited with what we got back. And this was super helpful for us because it not only helped us find bugs that we hadn't encountered during our development process, but it also allowed us to find out things that we hadn't thought about with the application, new features that citizens may, may have, may want, or just things that didn't seem, the flows that didn't seem quite right in the application. So I think in the end, it's allowed us to produce an application that's, that's really nice, and I think citizens are going to get a great use out of it. So let's hop in and take a look at the application. All right. So what we have here are four different versions of the app. So we have a, a web version. We have a tablet version running on an iPad. We have a version running on an iPhone and an Android version. You're seeing different, different backgrounds here on the, on the login screen, because we, we want to, this changes every time you try, at first, the first time you log, launch the app, it has a different image. out materials, select materials as well. Kiosks can also be Wi-Fi enabled, further bridging the digital divide and allowing customers to download content to either their smartphone or tablet as well. Customers can also return their physical materials to any of these kiosks located in our library system. I'm now happy to answer any questions that you might have about our vision.
Any questions? Tell you what, I think you, Mr. Tower.
I just want to thank Eva for putting this vision together. This is not her 2122 budget request. This is a visioning project, but I think it's really helpful to have the long-range view, and it seems to me to be a very sensible one with a reachable goal. I do think these kiosks are something that we really should focus on. They've been enormously popular. I think probably the advent of the Amazon lockers have gotten people used to the idea of going into shopping center areas, areas where they can get to, where they can almost always find a ride, because somebody's always going to Whole Foods or Walmart or somewhere like that that's nearby. And people are used to using, become used to using Amazon lockers by the millions. So I've never used one myself, but I think that's had a big, probably had a big impact on people being very comfortable with these kiosks.
Have you ever used a Redbox machine?
I've not, but I've watched, I've watched many people as I'm standing in the grocery line do it, so I think I could do it myself.
Yes, and ours would be free because you just need a library card.
Right, yeah. No, it's great outreach and really taking, taking library services to the people where they need it. And I also, of course, the broadband issue, libraries' contribution to bringing the Internet to all citizens of Virginia Beach, it's an incredibly important link, and I'm sure it will continue to be. My hope is that the library will, will sort of set the standard for technology. Rather than trail technology, libraries are great places to try out technology, the advances. And what that does is bring not just the people who are high, high users of technology, but it lets people know what's coming next, so they can have some understanding of where their current technology fits in. I mean, there's no reason in the world Virginia Beach can't be a real leader in libraries' technology. It already is in the state, but I mean, a national leader, which is, hearkens back to the discussion we just had about Mocha. So some things we do very, very well in Virginia Beach, and libraries is one of them. The public surveys, as long as I've been associated with the library board, and that's been a long time now, sometimes we lose out to the fire department.
But only the fire department.
But only the fire department, and not every time. So we, we've got a great track record. Thanks Eva for, all you and your great staff for doing.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Wood.
I just want to say thank you, Ms. Poole, for just your dedication and just how you are able to still allow citizens to enjoy those amenities of the library even through a pandemic, just all the creative ways. I really appreciate that. I know that can be challenging, so thank you for that. And I was happy to see in that whole project and vision, a proposed Centerville Library and Rec Center. That, that makes me smile.
Great.
Makes me happy. Thank you for including that information. I appreciate it.
If it could happen, it would make me smile as well.
Yes, yes, that's how I feel. It can happen.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next council briefing will be an update on the, in the Virginia Beach mobile portal at the request of Councilmember Rouse.
Welcome.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Chris Golding. I'm the app development team lead for the city's IT department. And I'm here today to give y'all a update on the One-Stop Shop application that I had talked about a couple of months ago. The application's now known as VB Connect 3.0. It's our next, next version of our VB Connect application. So some of the high-level goals that we had for this app were to develop a citizen-centric application that brings data from different systems together to provide citizens, citizens with a one-stop shop to interact with the city. So it was meant to bring in things like billing and payments, account service, or account info, and other services. All this while increasing interaction with citizens by providing them with a personalized dashboard, push notifications, and integrating with city platforms and applications that they already use. All this while doing, while integrating with VBGov.com and the upcoming VirginiaBeach.gov seamlessly. And we want the application to be available on Android, iOS, and the web. The application, we're looking to, or we're delivering it in multiple phases. The goal with delivering multiple phases that we're able to gain feedback from users, which will help us get insight and adapt to their changing needs and requirements. So today, we're kind of going to take a look at the first phase, which we're launching very soon. And the goals of the first phase were to lay out the foundation for our future phases, introduce a personalized dashboard that displays data to citizens that don't, doesn't require authentication. So we use the citizen's address that they provide to bring in property data, information about their nearest facilities, voting information, and their trash and recycling schedule. And then it has support also for push notifications and the ability to send, for push notifications to send alerts and emergency updates to citizens. So since, since I last presented something to y'all, we launched a beta to city employees back in the middle of December. Then we expanded that out to citizens in the middle of Jan, January, and then we did a survey to help name the application. We gave citizens a few options, and VB Connect was what they had, had chosen. And the goal right now is for us to go live sometime next week. Just right now, we're pending approval by Apple and Google as we submit it through their app stores. So the results of the, of engaging citizens and city employees to test the app were that we had 241 testers register. Of that, 207 of them were actually active with, with testing. They used the app quite a bit. We had 541 sessions with average user used, used at least 3.2 times. They used 200, or they viewed 2,000 screens in it. We did, we released nine versions of the application through the beta period, and we got a ton of feedback, got 45 pieces of feedback from citizens, which may not sound like a huge amount, but for the apps that we've released in the past and the betas that we've done, we really haven't gotten a huge amount of feedback, so this is probably more than we've received for all of our apps combined. So I was extremely excited with what we got back. And this was super helpful for us because it not only helped us find bugs that we hadn't encountered during our development process, but it also allowed us to find out things that we hadn't thought about with the application, new features that citizens may, may have, may want, or just things that didn't seem, the flows that didn't seem quite right in the application. So I think in the end, it's allowed us to produce an application that's, that's really nice, and I think citizens are going to get a great use out of it. So let's hop in and take a look at the application. All right. So what we have here are four different versions of the app. So we have a, a web version. We have a tablet version running on an iPad. We have a version running on an iPhone and an Android version. You're seeing different, different backgrounds here on the, on the login screen because we, we want to, this changes every time you try, at first, the first time you log, launch the app, it has a different image. So we're, we try to highlight different parts of the city with that. So when a citizen comes in, they'll provide their address, or they can use location services to find, to get their, or to find their, their location. And I'll do this on a couple of devices, just so y'all can see how that's the same pretty much everywhere. Oh, come on. Yeah. Oh, there we go, finally. Oh, I hit. Things always go wrong when you do a demo. So the first thing you'll see on the home screen, and this is universal across the app, is you have your, the user's garbage and recycling pickup schedule, and from right here, they can click to schedule a bulk item pickup, citizens' closest facilities, so the library, rec center, park, police station, fire station, and for some facilities, we even provide the ability to navigate to that location or to call them. Emergency preparedness information, so their evacuation zone, closest shelters, some basic property info, so you know, ACO zone, the district they're in, property value, that type of thing. And if you click more info here, we actually go out to our VB property application to, where you can get even more info about your property. Then we have voting info down at the bottom, so you can see what precinct you're, you, what precinct you're in, your district, and you poll, what your polling location is. And if you click the more info there, it'll take you out to the voter registrar's website to get more, more information. Up here at the top, we have the menu. Here at the menu, you can access additional things like popular city services, news. So we pull news from city headlines, news releases, Twitter, and YouTube, provide that in kind of a single list that citizens can filter down to see only the things they want to see. Then we also have our app listing. Now, the goal of this app is to eventually be a one-stop shop, but we're not, you know, we're not there today. So we have other applications out there, either apps that we've built or apps that we've partnered with, that we provide a listing so citizens can find them and get that, get that information. And then we have our quick links here, and here's where a citizen can go to pay their, pay, you know, fines or, or city bills, find out, you know, when the next public meeting is, get your, get the department listing. And we'll be expanding this out and doing some other integrations to bring this, bring this deeper into the rest of the application and, and future phases. So this is what we have in Phase 1. We are planning some additional work coming up, so let's hop back into the presentation. Coming up in Q3, we're looking to add the ability to view events that are occurring at the closest library, park, or rec centers, bring in live parking data where we have that data. Also, we want to include push notifications for news releases and other news sources, so a citizen could say, want to get all news releases for IT-related items, you know, going to talk about our stuff a little bit. So they can subscribe to that and get a push notification every time a new IT press release went out. And then we'll be migrating some of our data sources from VBGov.com over to VirginiaBeach.gov as that site goes live. Then in Q1 of next year, we're looking to integrate with a citizen login and profile, so citizens can log in and get a more personalized experience than what we're providing now. Then we'll also be adding what we're calling our middleware, where we can tie into other systems and really provide that personalized experience for sys, for citizens. And then we'll be integrating with some additional city services. We're still nailing down what those services are going to be in that, in that release, but we're actively working on that now. That's really about all I have. Y'all have any questions or anything?
Any questions? Mr. Rouse, any comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Abbott.
Thanks. Well, it's an excellent presentation in the app on the formats you showed us, looks very user-friendly. And I think you've already answered this question, but for clarification, it sounds like at this point, it's not going to be so integrated that, say, I wanted to pay my rec center pass and my water bill and my parking ticket all on the same dashboard. I won't be able to see that yet.
That's correct. We're planning to bring, or we're going to be working with the departments to help start bringing in some of those services as we go. It's going to be a multi-release process to get that to, you know, departments have so many different systems.
Sure, well, I realize you're not talking about just one department's bills. You're talking about lots of departments' bills. Just a comment of something I think would be helpful in a future iteration of this would be to have some kind of dashboard that really does show, okay, Jessica, you have an outstanding parking ticket, you have parking ticket, or you haven't paid, you've got your daughter's recreational club fee to pay. That way, somebody can really, truly, and from a bill programming standpoint, and probably be helping, help with collecting our fees and stuff like that, so. But it's very, very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you, and that is totally on the horizon for what we want to deliver.
Okay, Ms. Rouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, great job. Just want to say thank you for your presentation. You guys put a lot of work and a lot of hours into this app. It looks, it looks great. I think it's going to serve our community very, very well, especially when we get to personalization of, of individuals. And, and one of the things, I think, I just, just want to make sure it's not overlooked, but one of the things that we want to celebrate, the diversity of our community, all the way down to Punggol and Princess Anne, to Bay's Island, Haven, and Oceanfront, and Kinsville, is the fact that every time you go to this app, a different image comes on, and I think that, that's, that's very important. It's a little thing, but it matters so much to our, our, our community as well. And this first phase is just the foundation, is just the start, and I think, you know, Sky is really, well, there is no limit when it comes to this application. So I just want to thank you, your team, and Peter as well, for the times you guys put in developing this app.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. I tell you what, we're going, very good progress.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you, Aaron.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the first budget presentation will be provided by Daniel Progan, the Director over the Office of Emergency Management.
My name is Danielle, and I am serving as the new Director of the Office of Emergency Management. I am also the Emergency Management Coordinator for the city. So today, I will pre, be presenting to you the proposed city manager's budget for the upcoming fiscal year. We are a small but mighty office. We have a total of eight full-time staff, and one of those was just approved by City Council last week to provide support to our mitigation programs that are funded through our FEMA assistance grants. We have a total of two divisions. One's our emergency management side of the house, and we are currently working to build out our security division. Our total budget is $625,000. So as you can see here, there is relatively little change in our operating expenses from the current fiscal year. We, the, the reduced amount that you see here is really a reflection of our full-time staff that was dedicated to the 531 Recovery Program. Her, that position was moved over to the city manager's office. So our operating expenses, as every other department, represent about 92% of our staffing and our personnel costs, and we do have dedicated training monies set aside for citywide training and exercise initiatives. So key changes and highlights from our office. As you are well aware, our former director, Erin Sutton, left in the fall and was appointed to the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. We have really been undergoing a lot of change in the office, and of those eight full-time staff that you saw on the screen, five are currently vacant. So we have been vigorously in various, in various parts of the hiring process to get individuals identified and on-boarded. So we are moving through that process and hope to have our first hire on by May 6th, and we are going through, actively going through the hiring process for the deputy EM coordinator as we speak. We are also aggressively trying to hire the city's security program manager, and that position should be posted within the next few days on our jobs website on VBGov.com. In addition, since I've come on board, the city's Safety and Security Work Group was on pause over the last year to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic, and we just re-initiated that Safety and Security Work Group, and we're trying to reset the goals of that work group as we look ahead and, and get out of that pandemic world. And finally, a key change for our office, and I won't say changed to, to the fullest extent, but we are, we have slowly been working toward accreditation for our program. Erin built a tremendous program, very formal in nature, and we're still trying to document those components. So we are going to pursue accreditation through this emergency management's only accreditation program. It's called EMAP, and we have a great foundation built, but we have to conduct some onsite assessments and get that formally started with the, the new funding. So where have we been and where are we going to? Last year, in fall of 2020, we finalized the 2020, 2024 to 2024 strategic plan for our office. That was a plan that was bought into and, and developed through many stakeholders across the city and represents the four key areas of emergency management, mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery, and aligns with FEMA's strategic plan to create a culture of preparedness within our city. So that, that strategic plan has eight overarching goals, and we use that to drive the direction of our office moving forward. So kind of digging in a little bit into the program areas that our office is composed of, on the mitigation side, as you're aware, our program manages and facilitates the elevation of homes within the city. We currently have three active FEMA flood mitigation assistance programs that we're still administering, and we're hoping for a fourth to be announced any day. We are also developing a citizen portal whereby homeowners can submit their property history and other relevant data, and we hope for that to be launched within the next month, and that will be the beginning of the parcel-level mitigation program where we begin assessing the types of funding and strategies that will help homeowners who don't necessarily qualify for FEMA grants to be able to get mitigation assistance for their homes. Under the mitigation realm, we are also working through a hazard identification and risk assessment process and hope to have a final report on the key hazards that face our city, hopefully within the next two or three months. On the preparedness side, we work hard on a daily basis to coordinate with our public safety partners as well as our military and external partners. So that is reflected through our exercise and trainings. We have conducted a few key trainings over the last couple of months and are looking ahead to see how we can, again, come out of that post-pandemic world and set up in-person trainings again, or in-person trainings and exercises again. We also continuously work with our public safety partners and our special events office to ensure smooth special event coordination at the Oceanfront and for other permanent events across the city, and did a comprehensive review and revision of our emergency operations plan, which was approved by City Council in fall of 2020. We also have updated our hurricane plan and our shelter program plan to ensure that it reflected a COVID environment, and we'll be looking at those again for 2021 hurricane season. From the response realm, we are very much still in the, the thick of things in terms of COVID. So we activated our emergency operations center about, over a year ago at this point to respond to the pandemic and have been facilitating a COVID task force, you know, from the beginning, and have been very much involved with the mass vaccination efforts, working a lot alongside of Chief Brazel and all of our other stakeholders supporting that process. From the recovery perspective, we did receive a tremendous grant, nearly $1 million, from FEMA on behalf of our region, the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission and the localities that comprise that HRPDC, to conduct an assessment of post-disaster housing in, in our area. And the OEM will also be picking up our recovery planning workshop, hopefully, again, within the next six months, so we can re-initiate a lot of the, the planning initiatives that were developed and ongoing prior to COVID. And then finally, our security division. So our intent there is to hire the security program manager. That person will do an assessment and a size-up of what our city's security, physical security will look like. They'll assess policies, culture, environment, training, and so forth, and then from there, they will determine how to utilize the CIP funding that's dedicated towards that. We have been continuing to coordinate with city departments under public safety, occupational safety, and as well as the U.S. Department of Homeland Security to continue with the safety and security initiatives that were started. And again, as I mentioned, we just re-initiated our Safety and Security Work Group and hope to keep the momentum going there and, and focus our efforts over the next couple of months. Finally, as you can see, here is the new and improved emergency management office. It, we underwent a little bit of a reorganization since Erin left, and this is how our office is organized moving forward. So on the left-hand side represents our emergency management division, and the left, the right-hand side represents what will hopefully be our security program manage, management position. And that's it.
Good, okay. Any questions? I'll tell you, I just want to thank you, you know, watching your work, you know, since you got here. It's been a seamless transition with Erin leaving, and you're, it looks like you're working in collaboration, you know, a lot with the state. Obviously, your mission and what you do is critical to the safety of our city, and I think you're to be thanked and commended, okay? Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Bobby Tahan, the Director of Planning and Community Development, will brief you on the proposed budget for his department.
Hey, Bobby, how you doing?
Good, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, members of council. I have the opportunity to present the planning and community development budget for FY22. Total budget for the, for planning and community development is just under $20 million with a 132 full-time employees. We do have a slight restructuring, recreating the long-range planning group that will report directly to me in the Director's Office, but continuing to have planning administration and zoning administration, permits and inspections, of course, our transit, transit area that deals with funding for HRT and our regional transit, as well as the Development Services Center. This is our programmatic budget for FY21 and 22. You can see the large portion of the pie deals with the support that goes from, comes from the general fund that goes to HRT, which is a significant portion of our budget. Falling up closely behind that is permits and inspections, which, of course, with the numbers still being consistent for our development in our community, that is a, a large chunk of our, of our employees. You can see here, there are some changes that, that deal with the structure of the department. You can see one of the key ones is the Strategic Growth Area Office. That, one of the key proposals in our budget is the, the changing and reallocation of those positions in the Strategic Growth Area Office, with some of those positions, including parking management, going to economic development, and the key positions that deal with long-range planning, area planning, and transportation planning, staying with planning and being relocated to our Sabre Street office. We believe that we can better utilize some of the skillsets of our employees to focus them on, on doing some of the, those projects that deal with the long-range planning, as well as sending, offering the ability for those that have greater skillsets to economic development to have an opportunity to help build our economic base through different programs that they have. The large portion from the, you can see the Transit General Fund, there's an increase of $1.5 million. That happens, or it comes from the recordation tax offset that was no longer being covered by an agreement that was done last year with HRT. So last year, the General Assembly took the recordation tax and funded it directly towards, towards HRT, and we are no longer being able to utilize that to cover our costs, so we then had to pay that difference that we had, which is, in this budget, about $1.5 million. And last year, they were able to offset it utilizing funds and savings that they had, as well as and savings that they had, as well as some COVID relief that they had as well. This year, we do have to cover that, which was presented previously when that change happened last year in the previous budget. Some of the major planning changes and budget highlights, again, the relocation of a portion of the SGA staff and parking management to economic development to better utilize skill sets, recreating a long-range planning group and planning that deals with comprehensive area and strategic growth area planning, as well as transportation planning and relocating them to the Sabre Street office to provide some synergy to our department. Of course, short-term rental fee, which is proposed for $200, and two short-term rental inspections that we can plus up on that side to be more proactive with our short-term rental inspections and being out and being on the front end of those short-term rental inspections, not just dealing with the complaints, but also dealing with making sure people are in compliance with the regulations. One of the proposals is also a engineering technician for the development services center to help offset some of the additional reviews that we have based on the changes from the Public Works Design Standards Manual. Our goal is to have that engineering tech take on some of the easier tasks of doing plan review that can be handled by a tech, while our engineers will handle the swim models and the reviews of those models as we continue to move forward, because those are such a more technical review that's necessary. Again, I did note the recordation tax offset. That was one time that now we have to handle that increase from HRT. And as well, that includes an advertising budget increase to better inform the public. Again, going back to the initiative that the mayor and Ms. Henley and Mr. Rouse had initiated previously, we requested some funds to try to find additional ways to inform the public, to provide for better information. It's not just to advertise what we do legally, but to also try to inform the public of what, of projects, and trying to find other ways to better inform them. To note, because of some of the issues that we had with advertising and the number of applications that we've had, we've already utilized all of the advertising budget for planning, and we still have a few more months left, and we have to make those advertisements. So this also will help us to cover those if we continue to see the same numbers as we continue to move forward. Again, some of the key initiatives, and just my conclusion, just short-term rental program is a high priority for my team. We are continuing to shape that team and to come up with a way after, as we continue to get the changed regulations implemented, hopefully with the public hearings that will happen soon after the budget, but also to provide a program where we have people coming in and paying the fee once the fee is implemented, and to be proactive on the front end to assure that people are meeting the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Another key one is the VB stat implementation, which is the city manager's performance management for not just, for the department, to assure that we're reporting and showing what we are doing and able to implement all the key deadlines that we have, as well as how we're efficiently utilizing staff. The city manager graciously selected our department to be the pilot program for that, and we are working through what is permit stats, so dealing with building permit data, as well as the development services center, so the civil site plan review. Again, another key important part to this is the stormwater management and development review. With the implementation of the new Public Works Design Standards Manual, it is different, and it is a bit cumbersome now as we continue to try to work together with the engineering community and have them understand how to utilize our models, but also to try to help limit and shorten down some of these reviews as we try to come to a better understanding of how to utilize them. Transitioning from pandemic operations, we have been blessed to have an opportunity to work remotely and utilize the technology that we have in order to allow staff to work remotely, also utilizing it to provide virtual public hearings to keep business moving for the city. We're transitioning out of that. Staff hopefully will be, our current plan is to be back in, fully in the office with our counter open in June, but also we're moving away in May and having in-person public hearings to, again, better continue to serve the public. Our transitioning staff, of course, as we do the structural changes to the department, as well dealing with public outreach and public input. We realize over the last year or so, there's definitely a need to provide better input and public information when it comes to some of these planning items, and we've got to try to find a better way to inform the public and let them be able to obtain that information the way they want to and to be able to reach out to us. And we need to find new ways to do that, and we plan on trying to tackle that this year as well, not just in that aspect, but also in, hopefully, depending on how things work out moving forward with the comprehensive plan update. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Moss.
If I could please, on transit. I do recall that HRT was taking some of that recordation tax, which is a tax increase the General Assembly imposed on our locality, because that represents what that tax increase is. And that is a tax increase on all of us that we didn't ask for. But I do recall on that that they were using some of that funds to pay for these, what they call their key network routes. And that would include Virginia Beach Boulevard and, I believe, Independence Boulevard. And also, they made note that they would be making up the difference in fare loss revenue using that recordation tax as well, if I recall correctly. Am I off-base on that?
No, sir, I believe you are correct.
Well, are you telling me, then, that this increase, and I'd like, maybe you can deconstruct that in a later explanation, because I'd like to know, since they're paying for those routes out of their recordation tax, and we were paying a share of those routes before, what you're really telling me is that the offset that we got on those routes, because we're no longer paying for those routes, they are paying for those, that actually the real increase on the residual transit was $1.6 million plus what HRT is paying for Independence Boulevard and the Virginia Beach Boulevard. Is that correct?
I will have to provide that information to Mr. Rouse.
Well, and also, I would like, Mr. Manager, to know what would be, since less than 1% of our people use transit, as you know in your budget recommendation, and some of the routes are woefully, it'd be easier to give them a car, a taxicab voucher would be cheaper. But interesting, when you look at those routes, what would be the offset that we would need? But I really, to make that revenue neutral, that's a substantial increase. You know, real estate tax is, what, 6.2 cents on a penny? And that's a pretty sizable increase for what they admit is very low ridership because of COVID, not likely to recover until '23, if I read their report correctly. So I think we usually would take a hard look at the general fund demands, or maybe we need to be looking at other ways of servicing, and maybe more places need vans in lieu of bus service to provide better service, but at less cost. That's a substantial amount of money for the ridership numbers that I have seen. And there's got to be a better utility and a better way to provide service to those people on those low utilization routes. And even matter of fact, maybe provide better service, and I think we could for $1.6 million bucks.
We are hopeful with the pilot programs that there could be some fruit to be bared from those to show that, but I will pull the additional information, Mr. Ross.
Because one of the things we've looked at here, and I know they've been resistant to this before, is the fare box revenue is very low at the current, probably below 20%, but I'd like to know what they really are collecting from the fare today. But I know I've mentioned this before. If we're really interested in testing the real demand for transit, which I think is low, but I could be wrong, we need to have them tell us, what if we just paid our share, additional share, and just made riding the buses in Virginia Beach free? And you just got on them when you wanted, got off them when you wanted, and would that have? I think they're afraid to see the answer personally, but I think we ought to test that in the marketplace to see what the real demand and where that demand is for transit, so that we know that we're spending our money right. But that's a huge increase for a small ridership. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. Moss. Anybody else? Okay, Bobby, thank you very much.
Sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council at this time, Bob Montague, Director of Public Utilities, will come and present on the proposal for his department.
Hey, Bob, how you doing?
Good, thank you, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, and members of council. It's good to see you all this afternoon. We're pleased to be here to present to you the Public Utilities FY '22 operating budget. And before I get started, I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce you to a couple of my staff members who've accompanied me. We have Meredith Kellum, who is our business manager, and Melissa Godd, who is our departmental finance officer. In getting started, we'll give you a review of our utilities organization. We have 415 FTEs, and they're spread across four divisions, including our largest, which is operations and maintenance. They're joined by engineering, our business division, and technical services. Our proposed budget for FY '22 totals $134.5 million, which represents a 2% reduction from the current year. This next slide shows you categories of our budgeted expenditures. And as you can see, and this is not unusual for us, our big drivers on the expenditure side tend to be personnel, our water services contract with the city of Norfolk, debt service, which actually went down a bit this coming fiscal year, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. And then other operating expenses, which include things like contractual services, supplies, capital outlay, and expenses for internal services. We'll get into a little bit more detail with this next slide. Wanted to draw your attention to a couple of the larger movers. And as I mentioned before, debt service, we're having a pretty significant reduction. We had a very productive bond sale last year where we refunded some old debt. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later. But also, our reserves are seeing a significant reduction, and that's pretty much because of money that we have in this current year in support of pandemic financial relief is going away next year. Next slide, we wanted to share with you our budgeted revenues. And as a self-supported Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, it's no surprise that the bulk of our revenues come from water and sewer services. What's interesting is we continue to see our sewer charges take up more and more of the pie in terms of our revenues. And that's really for a couple of reasons. One is the continued benefit that we have from the investment in the Lake Gaston project along with our relationship with the city of Norfolk for water treatment. Those continue to pay dividends for us in helping to keep our rates stable. Sewer takes up more and more with our aging infrastructure efforts and our rates increasing more recently on the sewer side versus water. Next, we wanted to share with you a few public utilities budget highlights. We'll start off in talking a little bit about the bond sale from last year. We actually issued $45.6 million in new revenue bonds and then refunded $51.5 million in existing revenue bonds. Combined, we had a weighted interest rate of 1.6%, which is our lowest in our history. And the refunded money actually resulted in savings of $9.9 million in debt service. Also wanted to share with you a little bit of information about our COVID-19 utility relief programs. You will recall that you initiated a program early on in COVID last year, appropriating some general fund money, some Water and Sewer Enterprise money. And then later in the year, late last year, we actually received CARES Act funding. All told, this is about $8.4 million that we've made available to our citizens in Virginia Beach who've been impacted financially by COVID-19. And to date, we've gotten approximately $2.2 million in relief out to our citizens, and we're still taking requests daily in terms of citizens who continue to see impacts from COVID-19. The CARES Act funding has been extended to be used through the end of this year. The city program will run through the end of this fiscal year, ending June 30th. We continue to be in compliance with the governor's request for moratorium on delinquency-related service disconnects. So we're continuing not to cut off payments, our customer service for non-payment. We're still in that state of emergency, so we'll be monitoring that situation to determine when we will resume delinquent disconnects. But we want to ensure that we have assistance in place when we do that to assist customers who still have a need for financial assistance. Some additional highlights. We'll start off with Maheron River Crossing, which is one of six overhead river crossings, part of the Lake Gaston projects. This is our westernmost river crossing. It tends to have a couple of log jams each and every year. And when I talk about log jams, it's pretty significant, where you can walk across the river on the logs that pile up next to the support pilings at this river crossing. Our contractor will be mobilizing next month, and in this fall, the real action will begin where we'll take that overhead crossing and run it under the river. It should be a pretty interesting construction project. I know I've had some of you out to visit with me out at the Lake Gaston project. And so if we have any interest in seeing this project in action, we'd be happy to take you out for a tour. We are also in the midst of a significant upgrade to our Banner customer information and billing system. That system first went live in 2005. It served us very well. We will be moving several versions ahead to roll out the most recent available version of that system. This is a major undertaking, and it's scheduled for go-live this coming November. We're continuing to expand our rollout of our mobile dispatching solution. I had told you a couple of years ago that we had first implemented this in our business division for our water service inspectors who do about 2,000 service orders each and every week. And this mobile dispatching enables us to get iPads in the hands of those men and women who are doing that work. And all of a sudden, we have 2,000 pieces of paper that aren't coming back into the office that have to be manually updated. So we're currently in the process of expanding mobile dispatching to our operations division, which is where we have 240 of our 415 employees working. So we expect it to pay significant dividends in terms of enhanced efficiency for us. Also wanted to mention, there's a new lead and copper rule that's been promulgated at the federal level. Virginia Beach has always had an excellent track record of staying in compliance with the lead and copper rule. You may remember Flint, Michigan, from a few years back, got a lot of national attention. We're pretty fortunate in Virginia Beach. We're a relatively new city. So lead in our distribution system isn't nearly the challenge for us in Virginia Beach that it is in some older urban cities. But it does offer some enhanced protections for communities across the country, including enhanced protections for schools and daycare facilities. It has more stringent detection levels that will be in place. And it also is requiring utilities to be more proactive in inventorying and identifying potential lead components in their distribution system. So we will be having efforts underway to ensure that we continue to remain in full compliance with the lead and copper rule. This is a good thing. I think it's, you know, across the country, it's going to offer people enhanced protections, and we're happy to see it, and we will be in full compliance with it. And then lastly, we continue to see a general decline in water demand. And I've been around utilities for over 26 years now, and we're using today about what we did back in 1993 or so. And even though we've continued to have growth within the city, because our customer base is dominated by the residential sector and with the advent of very water-efficient plumbing fixtures and appliances, particularly dishwashers and washing machines, the growth that we have in the city is offset by new dishwashers and washing machines that are being installed throughout the rest of the customer base. So that's interesting in that it's really going to extend the life of our investment in Lake Gaston. We have plenty of water to support future. We have plenty of water to support future economic initiatives. And then lastly, I wanted to give you just a brief overview of our capital improvement program. We have a thirty-four point seven million dollar investment scheduled for fiscal year twenty-two. We're making prudent use of net assets and PEGO to fund a significant portion of our CIP. This has really helped us to reduce our reliance on debt funding, and it's really helping us to stabilize our rates. And as such, I'm happy to report that we will not be requesting a utility rate increase for FY twenty-two. So that's a quick overview. We're trying to get you back on track here, but I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Moss.
I'd like to go back to the eight point four million dollars. I think that might have been slide four. I'm not certain what slide that was, but what you talked about, maybe it wasn't that slide, but the slide where you said you had eight point four million dollars composed of general fund money, enterprise money, and CARE Act money, of which you had a draw of two point two million dollars. Given that we're on the backside of the COVID experience and given that even more checks are coming out of Washington, bigger amounts per household, it's not unreasonable to suggest that there's not going to be a draw on eight point four million dollars. So as you drew on that money for two point two, did you draw first on, what was the order of the draw? CARES Act, then the general fund, enterprise? But how did you expend against your eight point four?
We are using primarily the CARES Act funding at this point. In the beginning, we had local funding only. It wasn't until late twenty twenty, I believe midway or late December, that this CARES Act funding became available to us. The CARES Act funding has some restrictions in that it covers water and sewer charges only. We actually received authorization from council to make use of the local funding to augment the assistance that we're providing to customers to cover trash and stormwater charges under the theory that we're really not helping folks who are significantly in need if they're still going to have their water service. Once the moratorium on delinquent disconnects happens, you know, if people are not able to make payment on all charges, their water service gets cut off. But to answer your question, we are making the best use of that CARES Act funding that we can. And at the end of this fiscal year, that's all we're going to have available, is the CARES Act funding.
Well, that's on the assumption that we don't, I guess I'm only asking, so the enterprise money that we sent aside, which I can't remember the amount, but something like four million sticks in my mind.
It was two point six million of water and sewer. And then I believe, it may have been two point four, and then one point six of general fund money, I believe.
Reason why I'm asking, so is the moratorium on rentals ends on the thirtieth of June, if I remember correctly? Is that the same date by which the moratorium on shutting off water, the state moratorium that you referred to? Does that all expire on that date?
The information that I have from the state is that when the state of emergency ends is when that moratorium on disconnects will also end. But I don't have a date.
Do you have the number of accounts that are subject to that action, that are that delinquent, that when that date is reached, how many accounts that is?
I do. I don't have that information with me.
I think all council members would like to know, I think, what that is, because that is just a ticking time bomb. And what I think I heard you say, and maybe you're not saying that, is when we get to that point, I'll call it the liquidation point, where you're not deferring, where you are going to shut off, would then our standard and criteria, which we heretofore have been using to dispense the CARE Act, be set aside, and we'd be doing one-on-one and liquidating those accounts? Or what standard will we be using to turn the water off and not turn it back on? Because the people have the means, it's just they have an allocation problem.
Well, once it's turned off, the balance needs to be settled before it's turned back on. And you also have to remember that HRSD also is authorized to turn off water service for their own collection efforts. They've been following the same moratorium, but they act independent of Virginia Beach in terms of those decisions.
What I'm trying to get at is before the train runs over you, we should have a good idea of what that target is, I think. And so when that date comes, there's a reconciliation process. And while we might say, here are these hardened rules, well, when it actually happens, the hardened rules tend to soften and it ends up back at this dais to try to adjudicate some lesser steep trend line to resolution. So I'm just asking, who is leading the duck and with the rifle and making sure that when we get to the place where the two cross, that we aren't surprised?
Well, this particular duck tends to be a moving target. And we've seen it, you know, for instance, we did a significant, made a significant effort to put door hangers out to some of our delinquent customers. And we saw a significant increase in terms of customers requesting the CARES Act funding. We will likely do things like that to try to reduce that impact that we see. But, Mr. Moss, you are actually our liaison for the water task force.
I know.
And if you would like, we'd be very happy to discuss with you as that planning is being developed.
Because this rental issue is right on target. And I have another question that goes back to that. In the end, since we know where we're at, Mr. City Manager, and since we probably would use the enterprise funds that we allocated before general fund revenues, and as we look at the true-up at the end, I don't know if you included that one point four, one point six million dollars in your ending fund balance or not. But if you did not, that may provide us some funding to deal with some of the emergent issues that are one-time expenses.
Well, some of that has been expended already, maybe if memory serves, roughly half.
Yep, we'll just have to get on accounting.
Sure.
But this just didn't provide us that level of detail, and I'm always looking for every penny that's out there.
Sure.
And what is the annual, I know what you're spending on PEGO, but what is actually the annual depreciation of your physical plant? Because I know we don't do expensing like private sector does for depreciation in the same way. But what are we, in terms of how we capture that depreciation in the billing, but what's our annual depreciation and our plant value?
We have two, I don't know if we have that. We may have to get back with you with that number.
And my last question, this comes up all the time, but I'm hearing more of it as water usage has come down and it takes you two hours to do your wash and two hours on your dishwasher. We have gone backwards in some respects. But nonetheless, is of charging for people on sewer based on their water consumption like HRSD does? I realize we're going to capture the cost either way, it's not going to change. But people feel there's no incentive, you know? They can't control any of their bill because it's a daily fixed fee. I know we've looked at that before, but I would just like to just, and it shouldn't be hard to update that. But I would like to know if we were to shift to, just like HRSD, bill people on what they use versus a fixed A, how that would change who the winners and losers and who are the break evens?
Well, that's the, that's the point that you just raised.
But in today's idea of no subsidies, low people, low water uses are subsidizing big users, and big users can change their behavior if they'd like. And I know what it's like to have elderly parent and have to do lots of washing. But nonetheless, it's a question we're being asked, and I think people just need to know what the facts are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott.
I wanted to go back to something John said that I couldn't remember the answer to. For those that benefited from the CARES Act funding for relief of their water bill, they're not expected to pay back that back balance, correct? That was, that's like a grant that they don't, okay. I just wanted to clarify that. And I'm very interested in knowing what that number is of who is in default and who.
We'll be happy to.
It's the same thing in my industry. These bills are just racking up and racking up and racking up. And then when people go to try to start eating away at it, it's unattainable. So is there typically, in that process, I guess, pre-COVID, when somebody gets to that point, do we usually allow them to set up a payment plan to pay that balance off and get their water service turned back on immediately? Or do they have to pay one hundred percent of the balance in order to get service returned?
Well, we had had some relatively recent changes pre-COVID from state legislation that essentially provided customers with ninety days in order to make payment on each bill. So prior to that, we used to have payment arrangements made with customers more often. But after that legislation passed, quite frankly, we have not had the need for as many payment arrangements. But in the current world of COVID, there's also new state requirements where we will be making payment arrangements up to two years for customers. So we have a number of tools at our disposal to try and reduce the.
Is that repayment plan going to be based on the balance? Or is that based on a person's ability to pay?
It will be based on the balance at that point in time. Remember, people who have significant financial impact from COVID have unprecedented assistance at their disposal right now.
Sure. And then is, for those who are able to utilize a repayment plan, do they have to show any proof that they need, that they lack the ability to pay and therefore need the payment plan? Or is it generally accepted if you ask for it, you can have it?
The CARES Act funding requires self-certification of need.
But that's for the CARES Act funding. I'm talking about our repayment plans within our organization. So if I have a, if I'm in default on my water bill and I want to set up a payment plan to pay it back, do I need to prove to you that I'm not?
If customers are needing, they can request and will receive payment plans up to two years.
Okay, cool. Thank you, I appreciate that. Oh, one other thing. I would be interested in knowing what the high end of the, like, the highest amount of, the highest bill in default that we have. I'm just curious how high that threshold is.
Yeah, if it's helpful, the average assistance that we're providing under CARES Act is about three, just over three hundred dollars.
That is helpful, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thanks, Bob, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council at this time, operations engineer Phil Cutter will give the presentation on the Public Works proposed budget. Also, at this time, I want to take a time to introduce LJ Hanson. He's the new director of Public Works. LJ, before Phil presents on the budget, can you take a couple of minutes and introduce yourself to the council?
Come on up, welcome to the family.
Thank you and good afternoon. It's nice to meet you all. I've received a very warm welcome. My time here at the city of Virginia Beach. I've encountered very capable staff, very knowledgeable staff, and a great city manager. And I'm very much looking forward to working here. As I think many of you may know, I came from the city of Suffolk. Was there for about fourteen years, currently, was currently serving as their director of public works. I'm very familiar with most of the organizations and many of the staff we have here. And I'm very much looking forward to meeting all of you and hearing your concerns and how we continue to move forward and what I can do for you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And Phil, before you get started, definitely want to tell you, thank you and appreciate the efforts that you've done in the several months that you have as carrying the acting roles for Public Works. So really appreciate your service, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, City Manager. Again, my name is Philip Cutter. I'm the operations engineer for Public Works. I do want to recognize also in the audience with me is the facilities engineer, Tom Nicholas, and the city engineer, Phil Pullen. On the cover slide you'll see here is some efforts that Public Works has been engaged in in the past year. We've been playing an active role in supporting other city agencies with the COVID response to try and keep all of our members free of the disease. Unfortunately, we've had a few that have caught in it and have recovered, and some unfortunately that have not. On the flip side of that, we've got a number of good accomplishments. Right across the street, the new Virginia Beach Sports Center that Tom Nicholas and his team delivered here recently to the city and opened up is a crown jewel for us and for the future will be a very good facility. In addition to that, we've been battling the frequent and more intense rainfall events that have been coming. And we will continue to do that to the best of our ability in expanding our resources and our capabilities to think outside the box and use the public funds as best as possible to address stormwater. Road projects are still going forward, we didn't slow down on that. Fortunately, the traffic did slow down this past year, so that allowed us to move forward on the road projects and VDOT, and the city has moved forward on those with great haste. And then on the top right, you see the future city hall building, which we expect to have a certificate of occupancy later this year and get everybody moved into that new facility. Just a couple of major highlights. We're looking, Public Works is looking to go into FY twenty-two with the proposed nine hundred seventy-seven point eight-eight full-time employees, spread amongst twenty divisions and four major groups, with a total funding request for just over two hundred and ten million dollars. Just a quick overview of those four major groups, which includes operations support with Bobby Wheeler, myself and operations engineer, city engineer Phil Pullen, and the facilities engineer. And then we have two other direct divisions that report right to the director, which is our internal service funds fleet management and our business center that supports the director's office in the department. Just like you've seen before, the pie chart for the budget, for the proposed budget, big chunks here are your waste management fund at just over fifty million dollars. I'm sorry, forty million dollars. And the stormwater ERU fees, they come in just over fifty millions at the current rate of forty-nine point three cents per ERU. We also have the internal services fund for our fleet and the fuel coming in just, combined just over twenty-one million. And then the big chunk is our general fund slice of pie, which is just over ninety million. Do want to point out that out of that ninety million, over forty-six million dollars of that is supported by the state. We get maintenance funding from VDOT for paving and roadway right-of-way maintenance. So over half of that is state-provided funding. A little more detail on each individual fund supply and the FTEs comparison to the FY twenty-one amended budget. You see six hundred and six FTEs or twenty-four more FTEs in the general fund, which includes twenty-one FTEs that are proposed, that we'll get into in a little bit, as far as in the general fund dedicated stormwater lockbox to support additional stormwater, proposed stormwater expansion. Let's see here, and there's seven FTEs increased in the TIP program to support our beach management for the resort area. And then a recent add, we added three FTEs for a streets and sidewalk, which we'll talk a little bit more about also. And what I did here is, or what we did was, we broke out those individual ask-by-fund group. So I wanted to start with the TIP. As I mentioned, our beach operations group, we have three beach operations teams. We have the resort beach operations team. We have the Sandbridge Beach Support Team. And then we have a residential beach support team that supports the outlined beaches at Chesapeake Bay and Croatan. Actually, the teams work very closely together and are managed underneath the same support roles. But their call for services have increased on upwards of three to four to five hundred percent on different calls for sweeping beach, or for grading beaches, for raking beaches, for picking up trash. This past year, whenever everything else was closed, the beach was not closed due to a lot of fax action by the city and working with the governor to allow us to keep the beaches open. The people came and they brought their trash with us, with them. And our beach teams were busy as ever. Even though they didn't have any special events, they worked as hard or harder than they did any other previous year. We had this moving forward last year before COVID hit. Unfortunately, it fell to the wayside with a lot of the other stuff. So we got it bundled back in. They will be working closely with the additional three crew members that we're proposing for street and sidewalk maintenance. That will work closely with the newly reestablished resort management office, working on sidewalks and paving, keeping up the appearance, doing immediate repairs, and then getting things scheduled for the off-season in the tourist area. Next fund is the Sandbridge Special Services. Next fund is the Sandbridge Special Service District. Every year, we get requests from the Sandbridge Civic League and the Sandbridge Business Association to provide recycle service for the Sandbridge area along the beach and the Sandfiddler Road area. So we've proposed one FTE to assist with that, that and equipment, and then the, a roll-off recyclable container down at Sandbridge to handle those recyclables. The general fund draw, like I talked about before with the 24 FTEs, the only two that are truly in the general fund is the proposed new Public Works Deputy Director position that is being proposed to assist with the management and oversight of the vast array of duties that are in the Public Works Department. As I mentioned, we've got five major groups and over 20 divisions and over, well over 900 employees. It's quite a daunting task, I've realized here in the last four months, trying to keep hurt on all of that role. So I fully can appreciate that. The other general fund position is a dredge maintenance supervisor that works with our dredge crew that maintains the Rudy inlet. We have three crews that work out of that, a day and a night crew, and then a weekend crew. They pretty much covered, whenever we can dredge, we do dredge. Most often, we're held back because of weather or it's equipment failures or what have you. But they work 24/7 if have to. A few years ago, whenever we had really bad shoalings on the inside of the channel, we had them on standby 24/7. So there was always a 12-man, we split them up into 12-hour shifts. But the night crew does not have a maintenance supervisor. And basically, after review and further review by the city auditor and recommendations, it was called for that we have a maintenance supervisor assigned to the night crew to oversee the operations. Last but not least, definitely not least, is the general fund stormwater lock, stormwater dedicated fund. We're proposing this year to get more proactive with our stormwater response. We're proposing a stormwater pipe cleaning teams, basically is 14 FTEs, six and the associated equipment, which would include six vacuum trucks, and then support for CCTV. And the goal there would be to be able to clean all of our stormwater pipes, which we have over 1150 miles of stormwater pipe in the city, to clean all of it every five years, to run a water jet and cleaning through that every, within every five years. And then if we do it in-house, it would be at a 15-year, try to do it at a 15-year cycle for CCTV inspection and back check behind that. In addition to that, we're proposing a stormwater BMP maintenance crew for the public infrastructure BMPs, the new higher-tech bioinfiltration swells and the likes. Part of our MS4 permit requires that we do have a dedicated BMP maintenance team to address the deficiencies found following our annual inspection of the public served stormwater infrastructure BMPs. This specifically is for public, not for private. We do inspect the privates every five years, but this is for the public ones. Just a note, because we know that, you know, we want to make sure we're spending the public's funds as efficiently as possible, we've worked with, under the city manager, worked with the purchasing agent, and we issued out an RFI earlier this month to the contracting the community to see what interest they would have in going after and bidding on the projects that we propose here for the stormwater pipe cleaning crew and the stormwater BMP maintenance efforts. And that RFI will receive input on that RFI the end of this month, and then we'll look at that to compare how the interest is and any additional work to see if we want to proceed with, if it's so directed and approved, whether we proceed with funding it via contractor or with in-house resources. Moving forward with our issues, very similar to a lot of the other departments, vacancies continue to be one of our Achilles' heels. Out of the 900-plus employees, we have about 135 vacancy, 135 vacancies as of the beginning of April, which is a little over 14% of our staff members. We're without engineering and the harder to fill roles, we're continuing to, you know, trying to fill those roles. And then once we get them here, trying to maintain them as staff members. But again, we're competing with the federal government, the state, and the consulting community also. For stormwater, we're recommended to delay the increase in the ERU fee. It was first implemented, council approved and implemented the first of six-year fee increase scheduled for three and a half cents back in FY20. It was the first year it was implemented. Whenever we got to FY21's budget cycle, we decided because of COVID to suspend that. Again, this year, because of the current status of the economy, we're recommended to suspend it again for one more year and then to resume it in FY23 to run out the additional five years of approved fee increases at three and a half cents per year. For other utility waste management, again, we're also not recommending a fee increase for waste management for this current year. However, there are some additional costs on the horizon. SIPSA is looking at raising our tipping fee at the regional landfill. They're soon to vote on that proposal, I think, the end of this month, which is likely that they're going to start with a tiered approach with a $4 per load additional tipping fee raise. But we're looking at covering any additional cost if those do come with our undedicated reserves right now. And then next year, reevaluating additional costs that we may need to support this fund and also evaluating where we're at on our vehicle replacement cycle with the possibility so we know exactly where we're at. The last time there was a fee increase for waste management was two years ago in FY19, and that was a $2 increase that took it up to its current rate at $25 per month. And I'll wrap up here. Just like the country's seeing, the state's seeing, everybody else, we're not immune to it. Aging infrastructure is one of our major concerns. We built a lot of infrastructure over the last 20 to 30 years. Now it's time we got to dedicate the resources to that. If we don't, it's going to be like the house. If you don't replace the roof quick enough, then you're going to end up having to replace all your plywood, your gutters, everything else off your soffits because you didn't replace the roof in the proper timing. On top of that, we also want to work, and my main responsibility for maintenance is to reduce my maintenance backlogs for the response to whether it's primarily is our stormwater calls is where we have our major backlogs. Want to get those down to a more respectable time so that we can actually hit the problem while it's still a problem before it becomes even a bigger problem. And then moving forward with the big buzzwords and key words is resiliency on our stormwater efforts. Everybody has seen it in the news. It's been a big discussion until here recently. It's been one of the major ones. But, you know, the, being a coastal community, we don't have the option of not becoming stormwater or dedicating resource to become stormwater resilient. It's just, it's, we have to do it. With that, I conclude. Back to the cover, we're here to serve you, so I'll open up for questions.
Ms. Wilson? And Ms. Henley?
I always enjoy getting these briefings each year, and it really helps you remember what a big department you have and all the responsibilities. I know we've been getting a lot of emails and calls from some of the ocean park people with the sand being, there's so much sand that's eroded from, especially near the bridge. And I know there's going to be sand that's going to be brought in from the, from the bay, but that's not going to be for a while. Do we have any excess sand that could be put there in the meantime? Because this looks, pictures I've seen are pretty bad.
I do understand that, and I was out there last year looking at that also. I'd have to check with the coastal on the supply of sand that we do have at the, at the Marina area there. Big part of that issue is the only way to get it there is, would be to do a manual or truck sand haul, and that would take the cost of, some of the costs that we would have. It's doable, it would be, whenever we looked at it last year, it would, you would have to, the primary route, you wouldn't be able to drive it on the beach the way we, whenever we've done the sand hauls at Croatan, where we dig it out of the sand trap right there near the Rudy inlet, and we're doing everything on the beach. There's not a room, enough room on the corner beside, on the east end of the Marina parking lot to drive one of those big trucks around the edge there without a high probability of it ended up in the Rudy inlet or the Lynnhaven inlet. So then we'd have to look at either going across Shore Drive or through the parking lot of the Marina. Then the issue is, is how quick you could do it and if it would be effort, if the effort would be worth it. Discuss this with the coastal folks, and at this point, where we're at in it, it just didn't seem like a feasible solution.
It seems like that's pretty close. It's a shame you can't do it like you can Croatan.
Right.
And have you any idea when the sand's going to come in from the bay?
The best projection I recall hearing was at the coastal brief last week, and I think they were looking at possibly later this year. I think I heard the, it was supposed to go to bid in June, I believe, if everything lined up correctly, but I'd have to confirm that.
June's not so bad. When you say later this year.
Well, that, and that is with the Virginia Port Authority, and we weren't able, as I recall, we weren't able to dictate where that, where the contract would put that sand in. If I remember correctly, Mr. Adams indicated that the initial sand that they would be excavating was not beach quality, so it would have to wait until they got to beach-quality sand and how quick the contract was, was put on, you know, executed. So at earliest, I think the target at earliest would be the end of this year.
Well, it's really disturbing seeing those pictures of, of how bad it is down there. So if there's anything we can do to help these people, it'd be really nice. Thank you.
And Ms. Henley, Mr. Jones has a follow-up on that.
I'd just like to comment that I've been staying on top of that issue, Ms. Wilson. And the information that I've gathered from the Phil Roars and the people who are directly involved in that particular issue is that it's probably, the earliest that we're probably going to get any sand would be November. But the issue of that pile of sand that's there at the Lynnhaven inlet at the boat ramp is, that's our emergency sand. And so we need to have a pile of emergency sand in case we have a major storm comes up that we can use to, to, in the spots that look dangerous and so forth. So, and when you look at it, it looks like a big pile of sand, but when you start thinking in terms of trying to spread it around to cover the emergency spots, that pile of sand's going to disappear pretty quick. So bottom line, there's not enough sand there to deal with the issue. We're going to have to use the sand from the bridge tunnel dredging to deal with the issue. It's unfortunate, but it's the facts of life.
Thank you. Ms. Henley?
Several different points if I could. I think the, the maintenance is so important. I mean, we all know that, that's an understatement. But I think adding these crews is a very important thing. You said that you were possibly going to look at contracting for those?
Yes, ma'am. There's an RFI on the street for the contracting community right now to provide levels of interest and capabilities. And after we get that in and review that, we can determine whether or not, you know, if it's, if the council approves the funding for these efforts, whether or not it's more feasible to contract it out or to do it with in-house forces. Our initial estimates were for the pipe cleaning crew, it was considerably less to do it with the in-house resources. On the BMP maintenance team, it was a little closer on the cost break-even part. But if, if we do contract it out, we will still need to supplement that with additional, some additional management inspector staff to help oversee that effort. What we would also have to do, as one of the contractors brought up when we were discussing it last week, would have to most likely do CCTV following all of the pipe cleaning to verify that the pipes were actually cleaned before we issue payment for that. So that would also increase their costs substantially to support that.
Well, I just think the pipe cleaning is so critical. We don't want to delay it. And I'm assuming that if we're going to put another crew in place, we're going to have to have another vacuum truck.
Well, it actually includes six trucks, ma'am.
How many?
Six.
Six. I was going to say we certainly need more than one per crew because one of them's going to be in the shop all the time.
They are a little finicky.
Yeah. But I think it's a, it's a really critical part of the whole maintenance thing, particularly in the southern part of the city with all the road dishes and so forth. It makes all the difference in the world. And so I really appreciate that, that action, and I think that will, will go a long way toward helping the concerns that we keep hearing from people. A couple of, one other thing before I tell you about a couple of things I would like to add into the budget. This recycling at Sandbridge, what is that recycling?
It'd be plastics and cardboard. Your standard recycle is just like what you'd have in the blue cans.
Is it, is it coming off the beach? Because I'm just thinking, in order for it to be funded by the SSD, it has to be related to the beach and the sand.
Right. And it would be, the cans would be placed intermittently where the beach cans are, next to those, so we could hopefully get the community to, to separate and put in that, and then we would collect them.
Good luck. Well, I would just ask the city attorney if he, you know, would make certain that we're doing, we're consistent with the SSD, because I know this has been an issue over time. It's not there to just fund anything that happens down at Sandbridge. It's got to be related to the sand and the beach and so forth. So watch that carefully and make sure we stay in compliance. And I guess we're ready for parking at Sandbridge this year. With the oceanfront open, I'm hoping we're not going to have the situation we had last year, but.
Parking.
Be ready.
Get the variable message signs out, and hopefully we'll get the first, the Princess Anne phase finished and get our permanent variable message sign up and operational. I'll need to check on that. I'm not sure where we're at on that, because that got disconnected as part of the road widening project there at Princess Anne at the Upton, Princess Anne-Sandbridge intersection.
Well, at least the Sandbridge Bridge is completed, but you do have that Princess Anne 7 project that would help if that can get completed before the beachfront. A couple of issues that I want to talk about, and I have been mentioning these and telling you that it was coming, and so here it is. For a number of years, we've talked about wanting to be able to incentivize property owners to do things on their property to help with the stormwater situation. And the Green Ribbon Committee has looked at it over time, and I know Ms. Wilson has brought it up several times, but we've always been kind of stumped at what could we do and the administration of it and so forth. But we have a great proposal to put before you. It's called the VCAPS program, and it's a Virginia State-funded program, which is administered by the Soil and Water Conservation Boards. And what we have found is that it's an extremely popular program in Virginia Beach. And the Virginia Dayer Soil and Water Conservation Board administers it, and the amount of money that they have each year for the district is used up very quickly because it's so popular in Virginia Beach, particularly for permeable pavement projects. And I think they tend to run out of the money a few months into the year, and then people who want to continue are, have to wait or either do without. It's a, it's a cost participation, and it's a reimbursement. So the individual property owner has skin in the game. They have to do the project. It has to be approved, an approved project, and then there's a portion that's reimbursed. So it's not totally a reimbursement. And there are several different categories of eligible projects, like conservation landscaping, of course, the permeable pavements, especially popular over in the Chesapeake Bay area, rain gardens, rainwater harvesting, living shorelines. It's a list of things that are available to be funded with this program. It's a list of things that are, are available to be funded with this program. And so what we're suggesting is that if we were to agree to supplement that amount, once the state money is gone, then we would have, we would provide a, a certain amount of other money that the city would provide, we're suggesting 100,000, to, to let more of our citizens participate in these projects. This would be an extremely good thing because we're not having to administer it and the Soil and Water Conservation Board is very enthusiastic about this possibility. This is being done by Charlottesville and Albemarle County and what they develop is a memorandum of agreement for which projects would be funded, would be eligible for the funding and, and that kind of thing. And if you're at all interested in, in possibly pursuing this, I will, we will have a proposed MOA that you can look at as we get to reconciliation. But this is a way we can, we can allow individual property owners to do things on their property that will help with the stormwater situation. And as I said, we, we already have it and we already know it's very popular with our citizens. So that's one of my proposals. The other one, restoring SAV in Back Bay is an extremely important thing to do. It's something that's been tried over the years unsuccessfully, but I think I have mentioned to you that there is a project now that's underway by a technician from Virginia Tech. I don't think she's, she's associated with Virginia Tech, but it's not a Virginia Tech project. But anyway, for two seasons, she has been growing wild celery in the bay and to this point, she's been totally supported by private donations by nonprofits and by individuals. And, and I think with her success, it would be extremely good if we participated because she is at the point of really being able to move forward. And with the success she's had, I think we want to, to see if it will really work. She's particularly wanting to focus on North Bay this year and that's the area that we just started, this Marsh Terraces program. So her SAV project will dovetail very well with that one. And if we can, can regrow the SAV, particularly in that North Bay area, along those sensitive canals, it would help with that wind tide. We want to slow down that tide coming forward. I'm looking at Amanda because I think she would love to have, not have to worry about her house being surrounded by water with these wind tides that we're gonna be getting anytime now if it does it in the spring. But these two projects together, the Marsh Terraces, the Marsh Restoration and restoring the SAVs in Back Bay are our, our most immediate and maybe our only hope for doing something about that wind tide. So if we could participate with her in that project, in, in the SAV, it would, it would be, I think, a good thing. I know Back Bay Restoration Foundation has, has been funding some and, and like I say, private individuals and so forth, but I think with the success she's had for the past two seasons, it's time for us to step in there and, and see what we can do as well. So I would like to have that also considered in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moss.
Just a few items, but these are things I hear back from citizens. Our paving quality is something less than desirable and I hear that all the time from people in the community. I remember the day, and I know Mrs. Henley can recall this as well, when we used a private company, certain corporation in fact, as our quality assurance and acceptance people on our highways and they were much better paved in the quality than we are seeing today. So that, someone needs to be taking a look at how we, you can go on, I'll give you a good example, right in my backyard, I drive it every day and I know Mr. Jones does too. You can go down Haygood Road and you can look at every single outfall where water goes in and you're gonna see this, a dip, a dip, a dip, a dip in the asphalt. And within three months after the asphalt was paved, you could see the ruts from buses, from the school buses in the highway. Now, I don't know if any of you have ever visited Disney World or other place have lots of buses, but in three months, they don't have those bus channels of water in the asphalt. So there's something that we, we can improve on, but paving is something I hear about. I know you've got a big responsibility, but we've gotta figure out a way to get a better paving job than, and that private sector, matter of fact, I remember when they made them tear up backside road and repave it because it didn't meet the crown specifications of the highway. They were, they were tough, but if we're paying, we should be getting the quality that we're paying for, so maybe our standards aren't right. On our contract strategy, you're looking at, I know I had this conversation with the city manager, if we're gonna go out with contracting, the contract length and the option years have to be sufficient that the private sector is willing to build the capacity. No one's gonna build a capacity for a one-year job. They're gonna have to know that if they bid, what they're, that there's options, otherwise they're not gonna make the capital expense to be, it won't be, get any competition. So I think we have, the contract strategy has to be, because if we do it, we're doing it forever, you know, for life. So we gotta make sure we're looking at the same timeframe, our contract strategy has a similar lifespan or something equivalent so that it's competitive for the private sector. You mentioned about the MS four permit and I thought it was interesting that we're inspecting ours at a annual kind of inspection, if I heard you correctly, but we're doing the private sector every five years? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, it sounds to me like if we're looking at our yield, especially since some of the private sector BMPs I've seen, and I brought to your attention as to their maintenance, and since that, my colleagues, that's all part of our contribution of what they do, it sounds to me like we should be inspecting them at the same pace. You know, you know, they're a major part. We gotta look at what percentage of our, our effluent, if you wanna use that word, are discharged from those BMPs coming from private. But if we're trying to improve the bay and the Lynn Haven and we're doing an annual, looking at ourselves with remediation, but the private sector's on a five-year cycle and let's just say they're 25% of our total BMPs, maybe it's more, that's a huge impact that we're not catching. And so maybe we need to be thinking maybe more statistically based. So I don't know, but I think that, that periodicity seems to be too small if our goal is to meet our permit thing. On the ERU fee, I, I know the rationale you used, but that's a very regressive fee. It doesn't have any characteristics of a fee. There's nothing a homeowner can really do to not flood the street, you know, and, and the person that has their whole yard paved versus someone who lives in a condo versus someone who has two or three acres and hardly any of its impervious, then we're all paying the same fee. It's just a tax. So I think with this bond referendum, which we're not talking about here, hopefully we can put this regressive fee to bed and stormwater and protecting homes from flooding is a public expense, not to be general revenue, but that's just the thing. On the Sand Bridge thing, I've heard from several people at Sand Bridge, so saying that, hey, who asked for this? So at a separate time, I'd like someone just to provide me who the authoritative person was at Sand Bridge and speaking on whose behalf, because there's been a lot of questions I receive from people at Sand Bridge saying, when did that happen and what did we ask for? And that's a lot of money we could get, you know, that pay a full-time person. And since this is an SSD, if we hire a full-time person, is that gonna be like a grant status? Because if the SSD, we don't raise the rates or don't do something, then we have a person, you know, I'd just like to know if that, then we gotta find a place to find a home for them. I'm always curious when we hire full-time peoples. So maybe if that's seasonal, maybe that's a, a contract expense. Because every time you bring someone on board as a permanent employee, you really are making a long-term commitment. I think we all would agree with that. You know, we don't hire people thinking that tomorrow you're gonna be, you're expendable, so to speak, so we look for long-term revenues. So I just wanna make sure that we aren't setting up something that isn't sustainable or when you go to raise the fee, that people say that's the first thing they wanna cut, which would probably be the case, I don't know. But we need to be mindful that we don't put someone in, in harm's way and we, and we execute that the smartest way possible. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Belucci?
Thank you. Would you mind turning to slide seven, please? Just wanna go back to the focus of the beginning of Mrs. Henley's conversations and, and that's on the, the changes to the stormwater pipe cleaning crew and the stormwater BMP maintenance crew. And if we could just provide some additional context. So that's 17 additional FTEs. That's additional FTEs for stormwater pipe cleaning and seven additional for BMP maintenance. Is that correct?
Fourteen and seven, yes, sir.
Yes.
The, the pipe cleaning teams, it included six vac trucks, so the vac trucks require a two-man or a two-person team, typically an MEO three and a maintenance worker. So we have the 12 folks to support that. And then we also have an engineering technician to help with the organization and the structure and a construction inspector for oversight.
Great, thank you. And so what you just described is the, is the addition. Would you mind sharing, if, if you have that information now, what the existing stormwater maintenance teams look like?
I don't have it off the top of my head. I don't remember.
Sure.
I think it's, I wanted to say four or five trucks and then the staffing is always, you know, we can fill that in and I'll, I'll get you that information, sir.
Yeah, I'd be very interested in that. And, and the reason that I bring it up is because, and Councilman Moss talks about this a great deal as well. I think one of the number one complaints and concerns that we hear as members of this council is about a lack of interest in maintenance and operations. And whether that lack of interest is real or perceived, the fact is that there's a narrative among our, members of our community, especially as it relates to the, to the discussions about stormwater, flooding and sea level rise even, that Virginia Beach has neglected maintenance and operations. And in some cases, we know that to be true. And in other cases, there's actually been a great deal of, of, of attention paid to maintenance and operations. But nevertheless, I think it's a, a pretty much, and anyone I think on this council would agree, we hear that a lot and I'm sure that you do as well in the city. And the reason I, I really wanna take this time to focus on this, to draw it out, is that I really want to take this opportunity to compliment you, Mr. Cutter, and all of your colleagues at, at Public Works and the manager in particular, for being responsive to, to these calls for an increased investment in maintenance and operations. I think that our community will be exceedingly well-served by having these dedicated FTEs and teams to, to make sure that the systems that we have in place, while inadequate in many cases as we know they are, at least work at their optimum capacity. That's, that's something that I've just heard time and time and time again and I think is critically important. And I think that this budget request is reflective of what is more reflective than I've ever seen on the issue of maintenance and operations of what the citizens have been asking for. And I'm, I'm incredibly grateful to see that and I, and I, and I want members of our community to, to be aware of this increased investment, which is really reflective of what I think of this commitment to council of maintenance and operations. I do have a more technical and specific question though, and that is the, the stormwater pipe, I see stormwater pipe cleaning and I see stormwater BMP maintenance. What I don't see, and I'm wondering if they're part of this, is ditch and canal maintenance. So would, would the stormwater pipe cleaning crews be, be responsible for that or are there separate crews for ditch and canal maintenance? And, and if, and I, because I think ditch and canal maintenance are part of all of those, that's part of the infrastructure system that we see represented there. So would you, anyway, is that part of it? And if it's not, why is that? And are we covered on ditch and canal maintenance in your estimation or is, or would there continue to be a gap?
It is separate from this. The council made a, a decision years ago that provided, we had one off-road ditch crew about fire, about eight years ago and the decision was made at that time to add two off-road ditch crews. So we have three off-road ditch crews now that we use to attack and we've got the city divided into 16 zones with eight of those zones primarily further in the south, beyond, south of Dam Neck Road where we'll do two zones a year, one north of Dam Neck and one south of Dam Neck. And each year we do one in the south because the majority of our ditches are south of Dam Neck Road. So every year we do one south of Dam Neck and then we'll do one in the northern part and we attack those areas. We also use some of our CIP funding for the bigger ditches and canal areas. There is additional funding this year in CIPs for additional canal maintenance, so we are expanding that also. But unfortunately due to the time constraints, the stormwater CIP brief is being pushed, but you will have heard more information about that in there. But they are different, different resources, different crews for the ditch maintenance. We're trying to expand our roadside ditches also. I think we got some additional funding for roadside ditch maintenance. We only have one, had one crew, so we're expanding that also.
Thank you for that clarification. As complimentary and as, as excited as I am about the increased investment on these elements of public safety, I would just issue that, not, not having the benefit of all the technical expertise that you have, I would, I would just issue that word of caution to not exclude ditch and canal maintenance as part of that complete picture. And I don't, I'm not suggesting you are, but I think the citizens are gonna be, are gonna be looking at that as well. So, thank you.
It's definitely a challenge. Thank you, sir.
Yes, Mr. Moss.
I'd just like to build on Mr. Belucci's remarks in this sense. I think, I think it shows for the public and this maybe goes for in the, looking forward, Mr. City Manager, but we really need a integrated flood mitigation thing that talks about flooding as its own thing, where all the pieces are in it, even if it's in Public Works, but we're seeing the part that's in wherever it's at, all in one place. And we, and we not only talk about what we're in the maintenance part, because why build new if you can't maintain the old, but also to be able to show how we are improving and getting, and restoring the capacity of our legacy capability. I think that's what Michael was talking about in a big way, to be able to show people even by neighborhood how we're restoring the capability. And then we can talk about, and these are the new capabilities and the new capacities and what that means in a way that the homeowner understands. Because as they see these new flood rates that are coming in October and continue to increase 25% per year, believe me, this is gonna have an increased focused attention because this means a big difference on how their neighborhoods are rated and it could make thousands of dollars of difference per year on what they pay. So I, I couldn't ditto his remarks more about the importance of highlighting that in a way that citizens understand and, and can appreciate. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Dehaney, moving on. Thank you. Paul, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, members of council at this time, IT Director, Chief Information Officer will come and present on the IT Department's budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Appreciate giving the opportunity to speak today. Before I start, I wanna introduce a few of my leadership team in the back. Well, first of all, I'll start with Kevin. Kevin, you've probably seen here pretty much every week, he supports this organization, he's part of it. Ed Feeney is his counterpart, also support the other side of the house. Carlos Aiken, Strategy Infrastructure. Boyon Dorch, he is our Chief Data Officer. And also Shannon Kit, he's our Budget and he also runs the mail services. So thank you again for that. So the last two years has been anything but normal for this world, not to mention IT, disruptive of technology, as you can see, and also the pandemic, as well as our own 531. IT has been front and center in all of those interactions. So I'd like to start out, I guess by hitting the right button, but the progress system here.
The IT Director can't.
The IT Director can't even get the thing to work. Oh, here we go. Thank you. I should've practiced where I came. Anyhow, we have 189 FTEs and we have nine divisions and about $25 million in our IT operational budget. And what we've done this year is we're talking about some maintenance, as you've seen from the last presentations. We're looking at maintenance as a citywide event, not just IT. We have previously money that has been set aside in IT that supports organization, but doesn't really add the transparency that we're looking for. There's so many things that use technology that is, that just kinda go into one pot. We're trying to say, okay, what is the total cost of ownership? What's that look like? So what we have done is actually, we've actually created a whole new budget just to. So, what we have done is actually, um, we've actually created a whole new budget just for that, which I'll get into some more. General fund, as I said, for the last couple of years, we have been very responsive, and also, we have done it by automating a lot of the processes that we've had. We've also broken out some silos and combined some departments. We've had some departures of, um, senior-level staff that, rather than fill those staff capacity, we have actually combined departments to make them more, to make them better and work more efficiently. So, that budget is reflective of what we have done, as long as also transferred that six million dollars into that general fund that provide more transparency in our software. The cost of, um, uh, Microsoft license, for example, keeps going up. All these heavy licenses keep coming up, but it always takes an impact on IT only, whereas it's more of a general, um, conversation that should be had. So, the changes that we've had, um, looked at here for this year budget is, again, that different, um, service, internal service fund. This is replacing a, a fund that was created back on the mainframe, back in the, probably in the late sixties. It just doesn't do anything for today's computing. Uh, right now, we, we're doing hybrid cloud, web services, and working on the mainframe as far as that whole venture of cost analysis doesn't work. So, we said, we had to abolish that and create a new, again, transparency for total cost ownership. What is it costing each department to run your business? And that's what that whole goal is for that. So, again, we look at the, um, annual software maintenance, and we also transfer two IT positions to the STIR office, and that will help with the, um, problem and stat office, the CPO that's coming on board, because we also believe in a data-driven, centric environment, and, um, that would help the organization get started. So, right now, as we take a look at, um, of our totally works and what we do remotely, security is foremost, the most vital thing when it comes to protecting our infrastructure. You have seen and heard the stories about cyber attacks. Well, this is also something that's done to the city. We have, we have, make sure that we put our investment in place to circumvent those issues. So, part of what we do is also extending our multi-factor application. If you have a bank account now and use your cellphone, you've seen how that works. There's no reason why we can't bring to the city as well to further protect what we have. And of course, the bad actors don't go to bed at nights while, while, while we also go to bed. They're always trying to get inside our system. So, by expanding our monitoring capabilities where, when we're sleeping, we have eyes to make sure that we're watching these things happen, um, that's also what we're gonna be going, part of the plan. As I mentioned before, we have also, um, look at automation of the processes, especially the business side. So many applications that we have replaced are thirty-years-old, but yet the same process have been used over and over. So, why replace something to do the same process over and over? So, we've really making a, a effort to say, use the new technology and also look at what it could do for you versus relying on what you've always done, the same thing, the same way. So, that's part of all of our building our operational efficiency and also our, our resiliency. We could never have moved four hundred-plus people out of Building Two after 531 without being ready. And this budget is an indication of that. We have been very agile. In the pandemic, we have now supporting thirty-seven hundred users that works at home every day. Okay? So, I think this, this pandemic has caused a major shift in not just the, the private sector, but also government about a hybrid workforce. So, that's the kind of investment we're looking at. And of course, by, by having that capability, as the city looks forward to different, um, probably buildings and, and how much we have capacity-wise, you can make decisions by that, by saying, okay, how many workforce do I need to be in, in buildings versus hybrid? I think all got put, put, put it to strategy to make sure that we have the right investment and mindset going forward. And with that, it's a very short presentation, I'll take any questions.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Moss.
To, you mentioned security, and I couldn't agree with you more. Seems like most of the more successful hacks have not been sourced within the actual system, but people accessing through third-party vendors who interact with the main client. So, I'm, I'm asking, maybe you don't want to just, just talk about here, but later, I'd like to know what we are doing to reduce our vulnerability, uh, to our third-party people who interact with our database and who are our most vulnerable points, based on industry experience for, uh, security hacks. And compliments to how well you've done, Baltimore, other cities have been held hostage to hackers and have paid a premium to get their systems unlocked. So, kudos to your whole staff, or we haven't had that experience, but third-party vendors, that's just one. Also, I know the movement in the private sector is also going to these, uh, micro-apps, so you don't have to do as much interfacing and, and, but you can make, you can be more agile without having to do a system-wide updates. I hope that, when you talked about your new approaches, that that's a tool in your toolbox. I think you've got things like Foundry from PLTR, I think is their way of doing micro-apps. But I hope that's where we're evolving to, because you are the key enabler to shifting our cost curve to the left. You know, because we have got to get a yield out of using this to do smarter, because that's what our competitors in the private sector are doing. It's what futures, using digitization to improve service levels while not increasing costs and delivering greater value. So, you are the department that has to make that happen, but you were right, I heard you talk about the functional people have to take the new tools and build a new house, not the old house. So, I applaud you on, on all your efforts and, but, uh, but on the security thing, I would like to know later, at a later date, what we're doing with our third-party vendors to secure that interface.
So, Mr. Moss, um, we're gonna come to you with the presentation in the next couple of weeks. It is our cybersecurity presentation, and it will talk about the last two years' effort we've been doing, and also what's planned ahead to address just what you're saying.
And the last thing, I know you've heard about this already, and I think you're the one that has this, I see this manager smiling behind his mask, is the decade-long process to get the e-ticket. So, I hope you're gonna be able to tell me that we're gonna get e-ticket in the police cars in this fiscal year, or, or I'm gonna get Elon Musk to help you, because he certainly can do things big faster.
E-ticket is planned for, for, for this year. Yes, sir.
Alrighty, I want to be there at the inaugural call. Alright, thank you. Well, if that's what it takes to get it installed, I'll even take the ticket.
I'll remember that.
Yeah, Jess.
Thank you for your presentation. Um, I've have a question about the actual hardware in our data centers. Do we have diversity in the locations of the, those data centers? And, um, what, I don't know how specific you can answer this question, but, um, I'm sure you're aware of, there was a major insurance company that had their data center go down for a week, and, um, because their data center was centrally located in one location due to the weather in Texas. Because we have the potential for adverse weather, what are, what, what are, what preventative measures do we have in place so that we don't have a organizational outage for any extended period of time? And I guess, what's our ability to be flexible in the event of an organizational outage, even if it's a partial?
Peter, I'll start real quick. So, um, as Peter mentioned, Councilmember Abbott, Peter will definitely give you some information right now, but as Peter mentioned, we're gonna have a, a pretty detailed cybersecurity briefing closed session in the next couple of weeks as well, so he may go in further detail then, but Peter, feel free to go ahead and.
Yeah, so without giving it a store, um, because I can't really give you locations, but, um, when you live in a place called The Beach, you really have to think about your data center. And, um, having been in the basement in Building Two for some time, it's always been something on my mind. So, we have made effort to address that, and not just from a regional aspect, because I, I believe we're all Hampton Roads in that, um, what I call fishbowl, if you will. So, I look further out to see what's out there. So, I could tell you that we do have access to co-locate our data center outside this area as well in the event that happened.
I, I look forward to the closed-session briefing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and, um, as we mentioned before, due to, you know, we had that important, um, you know, start to the meeting that had, uh, that was necessary, we are deferring the capital improvement stormwater buildings and roadways till the next meeting. So, at this point, does anybody have any council comments or concerns? Okay, Mr. Belucci, Ms. Henley.
I'll make mine very brief, Mrs. Henley. I just want to, uh, I just want to take a moment to point out, um, just really highlight a phone call that I received and an email that I received several weeks ago. And that was from a group of, um, citizens who are very active in playing the sport of cricket, um, throughout Hampton Roads. And this, this group represents hundreds of individual players, hundreds approaching thousands of individual players, who have no place to play in Virginia Beach. And, um, what they're very interested in is finding a place to work with the city where members of this league are able to play the sport of cricket, which is, um, an increasingly popular game in the United States, and as well to host various tournaments and, and other, um, and, and other opportunities for, uh, players of cricket to, to gather and get together. And, you know, um, they've had the opportunity to speak with, uh, with, uh, various departments within the city, and I make no critique or criticism of them, it's just that we've gotten nowhere. And I think it's of the highest, I, I think it's very important that, especially as cultures change, as we have, um, increasingly more citizens from Asia who are playing cricket and whose, um, whose interest in this sport is only going to increase as, as families grow and as more people join our community from all parts of the world. I think it's incumbent upon us to take the, the chance to, um, to make room for, um, members of this community to have, um, recreational, uh, space and to play this sport. And so, it's my request that the, um, city administration work with me and, and members of this league to find a place where they can play within Virginia Beach. I know that, um, there's not a lot of green spaces in Virginia Beach, but then again, yes, there is. And so, there's certainly gotta be somewhere within the, the large city of Virginia, of Virginia Beach where we can find a place for members of the, uh, who are interested in cricket to play. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Henley.
Well, returning somewhat to the topic that we began this evening, I had, had other comments, but I, I held them back for this particular time, and so the other discussion could go on. But it seemed to me, as I thought back after last week, that rather than waiting until the last to start compiling our reconciliation list, that it would be a good thing if we sort of did it as we go along. And we sort of made a start with that, uh, by looking at those, uh, issues that the chief had brought us last week that really could be purchased now, and I really appreciate the city manager putting that list together. I think this is important, because since we do have the funding available, we don't have to wait until July, we can go ahead and get these, uh, these cameras purchased and the other things done, so that, that they can be done immediately, and I think that's really important. And I also, uh, appreciate Mr. Wood putting together, uh, what he did as far as, uh, beginning some of the discussion on staffing, particularly with the Police Department and pay. I, I really think it will be good to, for us to, to kind of do this as an ongoing fashion, so we know what everybody is thinking. I particularly, uh, in thinking about those issues, uh, from the public safety people, made my list, and, uh, just kind of want to share with you some of the things that stood out to me. Of course, these things that are on this list were there, that thankfully are already in the works. But I, I think, uh, if we have an idea of sort of where we want to go, it will help us develop this reconciliation, and particularly with the public safety, uh, give us a, a feeling that we're addressing this sooner rather than later, and folks will know that we're, we're serious about doing some of these things. I really was impressed with that real-time crime center that the chief talked about. I certainly hope we can do that, and I think it would be good to, if we sort of agree that that's something that we want, while Building Two is, is being designed now and under construction. I think it's, it, the sooner that we can send the message that we would like to have that ultimately, uh, put in place, uh, the better, so that, that it can be planned for. I certainly think that if, if all of those things are going to assist us in dealing with the, um, uh, the, the crime in the city, the public safety, I think public safety are, or, I just feel that every single person who visits or lives or works in the city of Virginia Beach should feel and be safe, no matter where they are in the city. And, and I think that's, that's really a, a top priority. You know, we have our high priorities, but then we have the top priority, and so I think we've kind of agreed that, that public safety hits the top. So, I really feel that that's an important thing. I, I, um, I know that Mr. Belucci would like to, uh, add on the public defender parody, and, and I'll let him talk about that. I was surprised last year, last week, when I learned that, or we learned that the E-911 to, uh, call-takers are not considered first responders. I think they should be, and if that takes some funding action, I think we should, we should, uh, take that action to, to move it forward. The juvenile court issue, I thought that we had handled that, but apparently we only did it for one year, I think it was, what, forty-four thousand dollars? I have been asking or sort of putting in the, in the pot since we started talking about the CARES Act, uh, the concern for mental health, uh, particularly the mental health of, uh, people who are incarcerated. And I, I really think that's an important issue that we need to, uh, continue to look at, to see what we can do, uh, to help people, uh, who not only have a mental health issue and it's recognized as they are first arrested, and we have the CIT program to really work on that, but also, are there things that we can do to help them so that when they are ready to re-enter society, we don't have somebody who has acquired a problem while they were incarcerated? So, I really hope we can look more at this mental health issue. I do understand that there is a, a gap in our CIT, uh, funding that causes some angst every year in, in putting that together. It might be that we need to make a, uh, an, an additional appropriation there, so that's something that I want us to look at. And other things as well, and I appreciate what, uh, Mr. Wood put together. But when I was, and I keep going back to this Twenty-First Century Policing Document, that's got six pillars of the issue of, of policing. And pillar six is the officer wellness and safety issue. And I think, uh, in addressing some of these things that Mr. Wood suggested, such as, uh, added flex days and, and other kinds of things, or things that can be done, but I think this is something we also need to look at. And, uh, these particular recommendations and, and so forth, um, we need to be concerned about, um, our officers and, and other public safety people who are, are running into an issue while the rest of us are running away. So, uh, those are some of the things that I kind of put on my list, and, and I will add these things today that we have heard about, uh, some that I have talked about. I really think, though, if we keep a sort of a running tab of this reconciliation as we go along, it will help us, uh, as we get to the end and, and really know where we want to go. But thank you, those are my ideas.
Thank you. Mr., Mr. Moss.
Well, first of all, I apologize that I wasn't here at two, and I realized you had to move on, but had I known, I would have tried to change my telemedicine appointment I had with my mother to take care of her, but I couldn't be here. But it was an important topic, and I'm sorry I didn't hear it, I'll watch it tonight, and I'll make some comments on that. But I do want to come back to Ms. Henley's point about, I think all of you received the budget proposal that I've been looking at. It's top of my list is making sure that we don't forget the people who generate all the income that we spend. They're also stakeholders, and I think we can make things work, and I think we can adopt the lower tax rate, the default lowered rate, and we have more than substantial revenue, and I do believe the economy is gonna outperform, and I think our budget estimates are low on revenues, substantially low, maybe in the magnitude of two or three percent, but nonetheless. But also, in that proposal, was identifying how to identify, fi, because all these things for public safety take money. And, and obviously, you've got to find the money within and reallocate within the stuff that we have, and I think identified five-point-nine million dollars for public safety. I think public safety is more than the uniformed officer. I think public safety, as the chief talked about, was a more holistic spectrum of things that are out there, not just the uniformed officers. So, I want to make sure that, in fact, I've asked the city manager to come back, rather than me saying, what do I think the best way to expend five-point-nine million dollars is, is what does the chief think from his holistic perspective of public safety? But I think what's important, too, is that we make our decisions based on data. But I think what's important, too, is that we make our decisions based on data, that we know we're getting something for our money, that it makes a difference. And if we're not having recruiting and attrition and retention problems in certain areas, then spending more money in those areas isn't getting you a different result, and we have to target our resources. So we need to make sure that when we talk about compensation, or that we are actually getting a change in behavior, a change in result, we are filling a gap versus buying labor peace, so to speak, because we don't have a lot of money, and we've got to make every dollar count. So if we do that, then we have dollars to put more stuff in the targeted neighborhood for services this summer. These are the things I hope we're looking, we're going to look at on that list, Mr. Mayor, is that we're going to look at public safety in that more holistic view, and that, well also that we don't forget about the citizens who are looking for their own tax relief, their own source of impoundment, and that we don't forget them either. I think we have the opportunity, but I do agree, and I'm sure Mr. DeHaney's been keeping the list, I'm positive, and he's going to share that with us, but I think we all would like to be having that list so we don't get on, was it May 6th, or whatever the date is. We kind of know where we're at before we get there, and I appreciate your indulgence since we're after 6:00.
Oh, listen up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Henley.
Well, I was particularly looking at this item on page 49 of the executive summary called the Emergent Needs Contingency Reserve. And I think what has occurred with public safety clearly is an emergent need, and so I see that as funding that is available, and I can't think of a more urgent emergent needs right at this time.
Okay, anyone else at this point? Tell you what, it was a longer session, but it was a good session, you know, good conversation. Thank you all, we are adjourned.